This meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:30 PM Tuesday, March 20th, 2018, in room 137 of the Edison Building. Present at the board table is Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent of Schools, and a non-voting ex-official member of the board. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, the Assistant Board Clerk. Ms. Edgar, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Barlow.
Here.
Mrs. Becker.
Here.
Chair Marvin.
Here.
Mr. Schlusner.
Here.
Mr. Selinger.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Workman.
Here.
Mr. Munoz, the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, tonight we have the pleasure to have students from Bamber Valley School Safety Patrol to lead us in the pledge.
Please stand as juryable.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
2.01, approval of agenda, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, they are. Item 4.08, approval of the 2018-2019 Longfellow Elementary School Calendar has been added to the consent agenda. Item 7.04, closed session for expulsion, and item 7.05, expulsion of student E17, has been added to the agenda.
Move of approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 3.01, recognitions, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time I'm going to call Mark Queasly, Sentry Activities Director, and I think the first group is going to be the Sentry High School Math League.
Ms. Marvin, Mr. Munoz, members of the board, it's a privilege to be here again this evening to do some recognition, our student recognition for Sentry High School. First of all, we will do the Math League, and Coach Val Kafka will be the first one up.
I did not do this at all, so they need to come up here. Come on up, you can stand over here where they can see you. I'm Valerie Kafka, I teach math at Sentry High School, and I'm pleased to bring a few of the members. And first of all, I'd like to thank you for your support of the extracurricular and academic activities that we have in the high school. We've been doing this a few years, and we are in our, Minnesota's in our 34th season of Math League, and this year we've had an outstanding season. There are, in Minnesota, 172 teams that compete, over 5,000 students. Sentry placed five in the Big Nine, all Big Nine, all five of them, placed first place. So, overall in the state, for our season, we took third place point-wise, and we had Tracy and Richard, who are in the top 10 for the whole state of Minnesota. Step forward, I'd like to, to Richard and Tracy, they're our co-captains. So, on March 12th, a week ago, we went to state. We qualified for the state competition, and we took first place in the state.
Oh, alright.
So, it's always our goal when we start the year to beat Wayzetta. Wayzetta, it's always our goal, you know, it's a pie in the sky, and we worked tight with them all season with point-wise, and we were, we beat them by two points, so we're pretty proud of that. We also had five members compete as individuals, Tracy, Richard, Alexander, Ben, and Helen. Alexander, will you step forward? He tied for first place in the overall points, and he was the Quiz Bowl winner, which was a lot of pressure. He was on the stage with the top 10 from the individual competition, and he placed first, even though he made us very nervous when he took his time writing his answer down.[321.02][321.02](laughter) We also have, after the competition at the state level, Richard, Tracy, and Alexander have qualified for the state team, and we are waiting for word on Helen and Ben as far as their competition that might go on from here throughout the nation. So, I would like to thank the team for their hard work, weekly practices since September, and the math teachers that prepared them, and the administration, parents that supported us along the way, and also thank all of those who participated in Pie Day. I'm proud to say that this team raised over $500 on Pie Day, selling pie for the American Cancer Society. So, our team, Tracy, would you please come over and introduce?
Hi, I'm Tracy John, and I'd like to recognize all the members of our team. Jason Dong, grade nine. Richard Huang, grade 12. Ayang Jamali, grade nine. Sheroz Khan, grade 11. Damian Kim, grade nine. Daniel Kim, grade 12. David Khan, grade 12. Helen Lee, grade 11. Nick Oldham, grade nine. Golden Penn, grade six. Stefan Wu, grade nine. Ben Yan, grade 10. Kudus Tgeye, grade 10. Tracy Zhang, grade 11. And Alexander Zhu, grade 10.[430.12][430.12](applause)
Yes, could, any parents that are with students tonight, could you stand and be recognized as well, because I know you had a lot to contribute to their success. So, parents, if you could please stand? I know there's some of you in there.[453.12][453.12](laughter)
Up next will be our adapted floor hockey team. As you remember, board members, that we have three competitive adapted programs. We have soccer in the fall, hockey in the winter, and then softball in spring. Some of our athletes are practicing and getting ready for that softball season, so we have a few of the members with Coach Rindi tonight. Coach Copley, as soon as the state tournament was finished, he got on an airplane and went to Florida, so I don't know if that's a correlation to a good state tournament experience, or he was done after 18 weeks and needed a break. So, Coach Rindi is going to come up and introduce the students that are here and tell you a
First of all, I want to thank you for your support in our program, for all three of our seasons now. And just to tell you a little bit about our season, we ended up second in our section, and so we were the second seed in the South, and played against the third seed of the North, which was Anoka, who actually beat us out for going to the championship last year. So, we had a little taste of who they were, what they were about. And in that game, we went back and forth, they'd score one, we'd score one, they'd score one, we'd score one, we'd score one, they'd score one, down to the last second. And then Blake here put a goal in with .02 seconds left to get us into the winning bracket. From there, we played a really tough-brainer team, which, they were really tough, and they ended up winning. We went against Maple Grove for third place, and unfortunately, we lost three to five after having two goals called off for offsides. So, it was kind of a roller coaster ride, but ended up fourth overall in the state this year. So, I have with me Noah Johnson, down on the end here, who is a member of our team from John Marshall, and Hannah Oakley, who is a member of our team from Mayo, and Ryan Broers, who's a member of our team from John Marshall, Kirk Peterson, who's a member of our team from Sentry, William Adamson, who's a member of our team from Willow Creek, and Blake Hillman, who's a member of our team from Sentry. Just again, thank you for your support, and thank you to all the parents who work just as much as we do for those 18 weeks of the season.
Could we have those parents that are in the audience, greater parents, could you I've been slacking a little bit. Last couple of months, we have not brought the above and beyond, so tonight we're going to try to get caught up. So, this is the December, above and beyond recognition. This is January, and then February, and that's all. But, let me read you a couple of examples, as I normally do. This one, Munir, I think is how his name's pronounced, he's actually a custodian here in our building, and here's what was said. He's a wonderful, "It is wonderful having Munir at our building. He is very friendly and courteous. He's always willing to help anyone out if needed. He is a super hard worker and always busy working around the building. It has been great to get to know him and work with him. Thanks, Munir." Okay? And then the next one is Pauline Sammison at Gibbs Elementary. Pauline is our special education coach at Gibbs Elementary. Pauline has gone above and beyond by always being willing to put in extra time and hours to make sure both staff and students are successful. She not only creates and helps implement amazing ideas, she also follows up and supports staff and students to make sure everything is running successfully. She's willing to lend an ear and help problem-solve any situation that may arise, and has an amazing positive attitude that is not only an asset to the special education team who works with her, but also to the students who are lucky enough to interact with her as well. She is one of the most kind, selfless, professional, and hard-working staff I know. It's an honor to work alongside such an amazing individual. Words truly cannot express how amazing and dedicated she is to the students and staff. Going above and beyond would be an understatement for all she has done and continues to do each and every day. And the last one is Nancy Venterkamp, I think it is, from Sentry? Nancy, the hall goddess, has been an incredible teammate, friend, and advocate for the last 19 years, as she has served as our hall monitor. Really, truly, for the last 19 years, Nancy has done far, far, far more than her job title or official responsibilities would suggest. She has been amazing. Thank you.[883.63][883.63](applause) And at this time, I think Melissa's going to come up, and we are going to draw some
We're drawing for winner of a $25 gift card, Rochester Public School Foundation. One of our missions is to support the staff, so this is a great way to show recognition of a job well done.
Bonnie Casson, from Gage.
3.03, school board committee assignments update. If board members have any updates they'd like to share with us, this would be the time to do it. I'd like to take the opportunity to go first, because I'm on the community engagement team. I thought it was important for me to engage with the Boys and Girls Club members who opened a, an ice cream shop on Broadway. Dirty job, someone had to do it. These kids did an amazing job of sort of envisioning this place, running it, staffing it, the ice cream is spectacular. So, Chocolate Twist on Broadway, Boys and Girls Club. Anybody else? Ms. Workman.
I'd like to wait to go last, because I do have a relatively, as committee reports go, extensive presentation from MSBA Day at the Capitol yesterday, so, is there any other reports?
Ms. Workman.
So, there were four, as I said, I was at the Minnesota School Board Association Day at the Capitol, which was yesterday, for, all morning until about 3 o'clock in the afternoon. So, there are four areas that I will touch on each. The first one is the, is TRA, the Teacher Retirement Association, which provides pensions for our, all of our retired teachers. This is something that's been under discussion for the last several sessions, and this year it looks like it could actually be set on a path to eventually being fully funded. It's, it's looking good from, certainly from previous years. Just a couple of interesting things. The current oldest benefit recipient is 112.6 years old.
It's not me.
It's not you, I wasn't looking, intending to look at you. So, I think that's amazing, I think it just shows that, you know, maybe the teaching profession does, provides some longevity. However, the projected average number of years a member who retired in 2015 will receive benefits is 27 years. Approximately 10% of Minnesota teachers are eligible to retire under the rule of 90. The rule of 90 was when your years of service and your age added up to 90. And about 85% of our teacher retirees stay in the state of Minnesota, and there are two of them sitting at the board table right now. And, our own Senator Dave Senjam is on the Legislative Commission on Pensions and Retirement, and there are seven members from the Senate and seven from the House on that committee. So, the, the basic changes in the TRA, which is in Senate File 2620 and House File 3053 at this point. The cost of living adjustment would be 1% a year for the next five years, and then it would increase by a tenth of a percent each year of the next five years to 1.5%. The current COLA is 2%. The COLA will delay until age 66, that means anyone who has become a teacher under the TRA after 1989 will have this delay. The exception will be those who are in the 10% group of rule of 90, disability survivors ages 62 and 30 years of service. There will be penalties increased for early retirement. The employee contribution will increase by .25%, notice where the point was. A quarter of a percent in year six, from 7.5% to 7.34%. The employee, employer contribution will increase 1.25%, but it will be phased in over six years, from 7.5% to 8.5, 7.5%. So, that will certainly have an impact on our budget. Mr. Carlson?
Right here.
Right behind me. And, but I, I think having that information, assuming that the two chambers of the legislature agree on a bill and the governor signs it, that, you know, this is certainly something that we can plan ahead for. So, my next report is on special education, and this was from Tom Melcher of Minnesota Department of Education. And if any of you have had the, the opportunity and the pleasure to listen to him, you will know that he is very much a numbers guy, and very dry in his, his presentation. But I do have some other information in handouts that I will share with you. Before I do that, I would really like to express my heartfelt thanks to Mr. Carlson and Ms. Bolisson for providing some definitions for me. As you all know, they've been really busy with staffing and maybe something to do with one of our other agenda items concerning boundaries. So, I appreciate the, the fact that they took time away from their day. So, the, um, these numbers are in reference to the cross subsidies from 2016. So, the pupil unit is how the Minnesota Department of Education counts the number of students for funding purposes. Students in grades seven through 12 are weighted a little more than students in K through six, which is why we have an odd number, a very odd number, 18,437.5 students in Rochester on the per pupil unit. On the special education expenditure, which is the amount of money that was spent on special education, was, in Rochester, was $40,759,522.3. The categorical revenue is the revenue that's received specifically to support special education. In Rochester, that amount was $24,670,470.28. The gross, the gross cross subsidy is the difference between the two amounts that I just mentioned, the amount of money spent on special ed and the amount of money received specifically to support special education. That amount was $16,89,051.75. Then, special education students generate general fund revenue, just like our non-special education students do. MDE does a calculation for the amount of this general education that follows the student to the special ed program. This total amount then reduces the discrepancy between the amount of money spent on special education and the revenue received specifically to support special education. That amount for Rochester was $2,434,084.38. The adjusted net cross subsidy is the balance after making the adjustment for the general fund revenue for special education students. So, that's special education expenses minus the special education revenue is, and the portion of the general fund generated, general fund revenue generated by special ed students. And the amount of that expenditure that needs to be covered by funds generated by the non-special education students, in other words, out of the general fund, was $13,654,967,037. Finally, the adjusted weighted pupil unit equals the adjusted net cross subsidy divided by the adjusted pupil unit. That is, how much of the general fund revenue generated by each student is used to cover special education costs in Rochester. That amount was $740.61. Those small numbers are hanging me up. Okay, we will now have a quiz. Take out your pencils. So, and this was actually the, the relatively simple version of this. You see, I have lots of stuff here. I do have some documents that you're welcome to take a look at afterwards, if you're interested in any of the other many, many, many numbers and categories of special education. The big takeaway from this is that, because we have a, our state surplus in Minnesota right now, is that, is to ask legislators to use $54 million of the surplus to compensate for the lower forecast for special education and compensatory aid spending. And if that were to go through, I believe that would really help some of our budget issues that we're having for, for next year. The next category was school safety, presented by Randy Johnson of the Minnesota School Safety Center. And the School Safety Center was established by the legislature in 2013. It coordinates and collaborates with MDE School Safety Technical Assistance Center and the Restorative Justice Program. It's housed within the Minnesota Department of Public Safety, Homeland Security, and Emergency Management Division. The Minnesota School Safety Center provides resources to schools, law enforcement, public safety, emergency management, and community partners. The presenter for that, who was Randy Johnson, has a very small, it's a very small agency. He has two people who work with him and an empty spot right now. But he kept emphasizing that, "Our services are free. Our services are free, they don't cost anything. If you have anything that you'd like us to come in and look at, please call me. Our services are free." Okay, and then finally, on the four main presentations, the federal tax bill. Paul Cummings did a presentation on this, and he was excellent, as usual, and he was really great at making it understandable at the time. And I'm certainly not anywhere close to being an expert at anything to do with taxes. But basically, there are three options. One was to keep Minnesota taxes as they were using the old federal formula. Another would be to conform completely to the new tax code, and the third would be an adjusted conformity to compensate, compensate for loss occurring in federal taxes. The goal of the governor and the legislature is fiscal stability into the future. In addition, there were a couple of other things. The K-12 telecommunications internet equity aid, there's, there's aid that Minnesota districts get, but it doesn't cover everything, and so school districts are then, end up having to make up the difference in the cost. So, the per pupil cost the districts experience ranges from a low of 85 cents per student in St. Cloud to $146.77 in Ivanhoe, that's per student. Rochester is more towards the bottom at $4.20. And then, Governor Dayton has 18 supplemental budget recommendations for fiscal year 2018 and 19. One that is germane to us is a clarification on the referendum local option of revenue, which I will not take the time to read. And then, in the, there is a proposal to have a five-star academic ratings for schools using MCA scores and high school graduation. I think I have that here somewhere, here it is. So, this was, this information was in the policy bill that was released on Sunday from Representative Sandra Erickson, who's Chair of the Ed Policy Committee. And we received this information from AMSD on Sunday night, after she sent it out on Sunday. It's 71 pages long, and the pertinent section starts at section 18 on page 27. And it, it goes through the, the different expectations for what you do, what an elementary school would be required for star rating, or K through eight plus, high school. And then, in the afternoon, we were able to listen to some of the legislators and ask them some questions, those who are on the education committees, and they joined us as they were able. And I was really, really impressed with the bipartisan work that was stressed over education. As Representative Loon said, "We all love our kids and we all love our schools." Most of the legislators stressed local control, no one was against it, because the districts across the state vary widely, only in size, not only in size, but demographically, economically, and geographically. not only in size, but demographically, economically, and geographically. So, I was happy to hear the increased emphasis on local control. As my fellow board members know, there isn't a whole lot that we can control from the board table, and I think these meetings that we can have with our legislators, continued communication is really important so that as they are writing and adapting and revising state statutes, we let them know what is really important to us in our district. That's the short version.
I do have one update. I did today receive a letter from the Federal Office of Civil Rights. If you remember my last update, we still had one item out there that we still needed to get corrected, and that had to do with the use of police liaison officers in emergency situations. The letter I received today did state that we've met that requirement. So, what we submitted will put in next year's handbook. We, however, didn't have time today to get that documented, uploaded on our website in the equity section of our website. I kind of had the cabinet locked up in the conference room from eight-thirty this morning until about five-ten today, working on some boundary stuff. So, we'll have it on our website tomorrow if you want to read the full letter.
Thank you. Four-point-zero consent agenda. Are there any items you'd like removed for separate consideration?
Remove approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, I'd like to recognize the three retirements that were in the consent. First, we have Julie Carl Blum, math teacher at John Marshall High School. She has been there for eleven years. And then, we have Dixie Holland, teacher for the developmentally disabled, severe and profound, at Sunset Terrace, thirteen years. And then, the last one is Chris Jarvis, band instructor at John Marshall High School. He has been with the district eighteen years. So, thank all three of them for their service to our district.
Thank you. Five-point-oh-one, under high student achievement, the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. This is an information item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time, I'm going to call Guthrie, and I do believe there's parents from the committee also joining him.
Were we going to read highlights from your letter? Or how... Who would like to do that?
Kelly, will you do that? Or you want me to? What? You want me to? Okay. I don't know if you know, but Kelly Anni is our president. Okay, thanks. So, I'm going to summarize. This is a report of, per the statute, we need to present our letter of either concurrence or non-concurrents. And so, at this time, we are voted unanimously in non-concurrents. And these are the reasons that we would like. We feel that needs some more improvement. Before I begin, just one of the things that the Minnesota Department of Indian Education found was that there's three main things that make a Native American student successful. And they are, number one, support of the school board and superintendent. Number two is that they see themselves reflected accurately in the school curriculum. And then, number three is that they see themselves in the school, in the teachers and in the staff. And so, with that in mind, the American Indian Parent Action Committee feels that the school board and district could do a little more to support the success of the American Indian students by ensuring that our program is developed to the fullest extent by either hiring a part-time assistant to help Guthrie capicella in the community and family engagement outreach efforts, or by utilizing its resources to buy more of Guthrie's time for the purpose of curriculum and professional development, thereby allowing our Indian education programming monies to secure a part-time assistant, which would help ensure American Indian student achievement. The second one is that the American Indian Parent Committee is not currently aware of any efforts to ensure that American Indian students, American Indian teachers and/or staff have been actively recruited. Similarly, with the retention efforts of its current staff, which we are unsure of their exact numbers, we would respectfully request to know where the district stands on the retention and recruitment of American Indian teachers and staff, and if they are committed to ensuring that our American Indian students see themselves reflected within Rochester Public Schools. Lastly, we would respectfully request that the culturally competent training, that is, if you want to say cultural sensitivity, but culturally competent training begin immediately, that it be mandated, and that its planning include members of our parent committee, such that we may be in compliance with State Statute 124D.78, wherein the Rochester Public School Board allows for the maximum involvement of the Native American parents.
Thank you. Board members, do you have questions? Mr. Munoz.
Yeah, I have a question about, in your letter, you state about not getting the discipline My understanding, Guthrie, you're getting it on a regular basis.
We have it. We just haven't discussed it during our meetings. So, we do have it, and we are able to talk about it. And after we reviewed the letter, we had discussed that we'll open our parent engagement meetings with that going forward.
Mr. Barlow.
First of all, thank you for the hard work. The American Indian Parent Advisory Committee has been engaged, and it seems like just over a year ago, some of you were before us, and it's good to see the progress which has been made to date. And there are a number of issues which you have identified as non-compliance. And what I would propose, Madam Chair, is that we, as we did last year, perhaps, those members of the board which are assigned to the community engagement would meet with the Parent Advisory Committee to discuss these items and to see where we can find agreement and how we can move forward.
I think that's a great idea. We did have a meeting a few weeks ago to go over the letter, and certainly, and we got some good ideas, too, especially in terms of places we might send district personnel to specifically recruit Native staff. And that's something I've talked about, too. We've talked to Mr. Baccan about that, and that's definitely a possibility. There's some challenges here as we move forward, obviously, especially financial challenges. But, you know, it's good. I know we talked about the disciplinary data, and you're getting that, so that's good. And it's looking better, too, so that's hopeful. Absolutely, I think it's important that you and that all of us continue to advocate for doing a better job of educating all students about the truth, about Native American history. And we'll keep focusing on that, too.
If I may circle back around then, and I did not attend that last meeting. So, are you able to say what progress then has been made, were presented with the letter that identifies non-compliance? You're saying a meeting has occurred, or a meeting with members of the board and administration has occurred with the parent committee. So, there is some progress which has been made, or are there still some outstanding issues that have yet to be addressed?
Well, and I think that what we're hearing now is that although we did discuss the letter of non-compliance, that the parent group is still adamant that it will be filed, that there's still a non-concurrents.
Yeah, I don't think we should use the word "non-compliance" because the way this is set up is they make recommendations to the board. Doesn't mean you have to do them. They make recommendations. So, I don't want to use the word "non-compliance" because that's not the case. Jean and I did meet with the group, and I was a little late because I had negotiations prior to that. We did address some of these. I would suggest that you remove the section on disciplinary practices because that's not accurate. Guthrie is getting what we promised you in last year's letter. He's getting what we told you we'd provide for him, and I don't know why you all aren't seeing it, but he is getting. So, we are meeting what we agreed that we would do in last year's letter. I don't recall, and I don't have it with me, but did last year's letter address retention and recruitment of teachers and staff?
No.
So, that's new. So, I want to make it perfectly clear that that's, it's a new request. It's not one in last year's. I can tell you what we're doing overall to increase our teachers of color in the district is we have a, actually, I think we have our third cohort, parent-to-teacher program through Winona State University. And then, we've also, this year, started a concurrent enrollment, which is a high school class that they get college credit for through University of Minnesota. That's an introduction to education, to try to encourage our students of color to take the course. And then, we have a second semester course that goes with that. Have we specifically targeted American Indian students? No. But we're trying to target all of our students of color because we see that more as a long-term solution. We agree with you that we need, our kids need to see more adults that look like them in our schools. I wouldn't disagree with you at all on that. But those are just two things that we are doing. The parent-to-teacher, to me, is a faster, it's more immediate, whereas the students, obviously, you know, we have to graduate them from high school, and then we have to get them in college, and then hopefully encourage them to come back to the district. But those are a couple of things. But that is something new. But I do suggest, unless you're requesting additional discipline data, then we're already providing Guthrie, that that section probably should be removed. But that's all I have to say about that. But I do want to make it perfectly clear that we shouldn't use the word "non-compliance" because it's recommendations to the board, and then you decide if you can or can't do those. And I think we have to reply a response on why we're not doing those. Yes.
Correct. And the parent committee is interested in compliance with the law, which means that we are bound to state whether or not we feel the district is in concurrence with the recommendations of the statute. I think one thing I'd like to observe, just for the record, because although I know that some members of the board have very kindly taken many hours to meet with our committee, and we very much appreciate that, I think that we also would like to point out and just acknowledge the fact that there are a lot of Native American students in the district. Since the parent committee has been formed, there continues to be more and more students and families that feel comfortable coming forward and identifying themselves as having Native heritage. And the district has a hundred and, it's a hundred and forty that we know of, and from thirty-five different tribal entities. So, and we would also like to just point out for the record that Minnesota law, since 1977, has said that districts that have more than a hundred Native American students should have a coordinator for that education that's hired and supervised by the board. There's no way for us to know what was going on here in 1978 or in 1985. But we are very grateful for the board's engagement with the committee and with parents, and we're very grateful also for the terrific work that the district has done with the liaison, Guthrie, and the administration of the district has been extremely supportive of Guthrie and worked well with us. Nevertheless, the Minnesota Department of Education has a rubric that they make available to us as a parent committee, which includes actually about thirty different elements of what's considered to be compliance with the statutes. So, although it might seem like we have, maybe by saying that we feel there's non-concurrents, that somehow there's been, there's a creeping set of demands or something along those lines, instead, I think what we're seeing is a desire from the parents to continue to move forward towards greater and greater realization of the intent of the statute. I mean, some of the things that are in here, and we'll certainly, if you don't have this document, we'd be happy to show it to you, it would be unreasonable, inappropriate for us to ask for all of those things, the things that we're talking about, we feel are most essential to the program that's been generated. And one of them is cultural competency for teachers and for staff. And, you know, I know, there's a number of us who are leaders in our respective fields, and leadership is a top-down thing. Our liaison has made available in the last school year a number of cultural competency trainings, and the staff has not stepped forward with interest to participate. I'm a busy person. I know how that is. We don't begrudge that from the staff, but we're asking you, as the board, to say, "Hey, this is important." Because if you feel it's important, then the staff of the district will participate, you know? So, that's the type of thing we're talking about here, is that kind of level of engagement and leadership.
I would like to say the district has made substantial financial and time commitment to classroom responsiveness. Maybe not one specific culture, but culturally responsive. And we're actually on the phone today, talking with Dr. Holly and getting his commitment for next year to continue that work. So, I want to make sure that, and I think the board's aware, what time investments we put in in classroom-responsive classrooms, training for our teachers and parent professionals. And like I said, we plan to continue that work next year as well.
And we applaud that. And I respectfully also suggest just a moment of thought about why it might be that there's a specific law dealing with Native American children. And it has to do with a particular history of not just this country, but this county and this part of Minnesota, and the fact that we're all inheritors of that history. We didn't make it. We didn't participate in that war. We didn't participate in that genocide, but we are inheritors of it, and it continues to affect our children. And that's why there's a special law about this. And we're not really here to necessarily explain it more than that, but we certainly are interested in seeing that that's upheld.
Ms. Seliger.
Thank you for being here and for the information you've provided. I have a couple of questions, if I may. I have a couple of questions, if I may. And I can't see, is it, I can't, I want to call you mister, but I can't see the, pronounce your last name.
Brule, starts with a B, rhymes with mule.
Brule, okay. I couldn't tell if it was an L or an I on that. Thank you for bringing up the rubric, which I believe has been in our packet before. And I think, I think you've included it as just a reference piece. I don't know if this would be possible, but for me, and I've said this like 18,000 times in the last week, because I'm a visual learner, I would like to, I would kind of like to know where you think we fall on this rubric in these different areas, whether that's something, you know, we do at this time of year or just in general. Because I do see there are many points and I can see where you're pulling pieces forward this, you know, this year and last year. And so for me personally, as a board member, that would be kind of helpful, you know, do you see us partially meeting, exceeding, right, as we talk about our students? So just a thought perhaps for next time you're here or whatever, I would appreciate that. But thank you for bringing that, that piece forward. When you talk about, well, a couple of things, if I may, the retaining and recruiting piece, I don't know if fellow board members know that there is the Increase in Teachers of Color Act, which came about last year and this year. And that's certainly a piece of legislation that I assume is on our radar as well, but perhaps that's an opportunity if, if appropriate, that perhaps administration or board members could speak to or, you know, reach out to our legislators and say, hey, we know this is important because, I certainly feel like that would be an actionable item from the board's perspective. That's something that is, you know, something we're working on, we're talking about, we talk about with our Association of Metropolitan School District cohorts, our fellows up there as well, trying to get those teachers of color in. And so this, that act specifically relates to that. So that was just a thought I had. And my third thought was on the, on the cultural competency. And I, I respect what you're talking about, trying to get more staff into those opportunities. And I look a little bit at this from my family engagement lens. So what might be the barriers? And you have asked us specifically to maybe have a very more pronounced voice, if you want to say, but perhaps we could identify some other barriers to have staff attend those things and maybe those we can work on together. Or not together, you mean you, but administration and your group as well. Because when we know people aren't attending, we know, as Mr. Beal said, there are reasons to that. So what can we do to maybe mitigate some of those reasons? And I certainly think that that might be a reasonable request, whether, like we talk about our parents, is it transportation, is it language, is it a meal, what is it? We can't, it's easier to move forward if we identify what the problem is. And so that, that would be my suggestion on that piece. Thank you again.
Ms. Workman.
I'd also like to point out that, and obviously there are a lot of people at the table who actually have to work for a living and can't get away during the day, but board members are always invited to attend those sessions. I had the pleasure of being at one of yours recently, that you had at John Adams for staff development. I found it really interesting and really helpful, so I really thank you for putting that together for, for everyone. And then there are the community events such as the one that, of course, food. I'm going to challenge your chocolate twist here with the Indian tacos, which were absolutely wonderful to eat and I really enjoyed talking with many of you at that event as well. So I think part of it is maybe even just communicating to people what kinds of things are available to eat throughout the community and certainly the communications, community, whatever, community committee, engagement committee would be a good place to start with that.
So, I'll jump in here to answer some of this. So in the last year and a half, Tucker Queitona and myself have, have delivered the same PD, I would say on about seven or eight occasions, and we've had about 160 staff attend, give or take, including some of, some of you all. And I think what the parent committee is, is talking about is the PD that Tucker and I do really is kind of scratching the surface and wanting teachers and buildings to be more proactive in terms of what they're providing their teachers. And so I know cultural relevancy has been a big push, but there's a lot of PD offered throughout the state that provides CEUs for teachers. I know that we had discussed kind of at the tail end of the meeting, like the Minnesota Indian Education Association Conference in November. Last year, I couldn't get anyone to attend because we had an all-staff PD day, so everyone was required to go to that. So there was a, you know, a conflict there. But there's also summer trainings that are available for teachers. Again, these are, you know, help with relationship and those things. So I think that's what the parent committee is looking for, is that, you know, it's a, it's not a, you know, Tucker and Guthrie aren't doing a great job, it's a, what else can we do to provide, you know, more tools for the tool bag for our teachers to meet these needs?
Mr. Barlow.
So, I'm still left wondering, the parent committee has done their part by presenting, briefing us, the board, presenting to us areas of concern. And so I'm wondering now, our next steps. I know last year, our next step did include engaging the parent committee to have the discussion that we're currently having at the board and doing the back and forth, which I think is better accomplished in and through the informal meeting. So it remains my desire to meet with the parent committee to go over the items of concern. Now, Chair Marvin, you did say that you, the superintendent, and I don't know if any of the other board members were present with you, but you did meet with the committee to go over the letter. Was that with the intent of addressing the concerns or simply preparing for the briefing to the board?
I think it was more to understand what the concerns were. And, you know, some of the things we talked about, I think we could move on fairly quickly. Guthrie, for instance, you'd mentioned this summer institute in June, you know, staff development opportunity for staff. So that's the kind of thing that if your group or if administration, whoever, sent it out to staff at every building, every building has a budget where teachers can say, you know, I want that, and they can get funded through their building to attend that type of thing. And so maybe part of this is just figuring out who's doing what in terms, we talked in terms of educating staff, for instance. And what I heard was that your preference would be that native teachers would be the ones delivering the education to other staff.
It's, we want our native communities speaking on that, the knowledge experts would be the people to do that. And there's just different avenues to do it. For example, today I was in Mankato and they're looking at offering a summer institute, not in 18, but in 19. And there's also opportunity to partner there. They're looking to figure out what it is exactly that teachers need and are looking for, and they're saying, you know, how can, how can we do this together? And, you know, they're, they're helping me with the development that I'm working on as well. So it's, you know, there's, there's room to move forward and to lead, I think. We just have to want to do it. I think the rubric also, you know, it's not so much of a, you know, I don't, I don't think with the rubric, we want the parent committee doing this on a solo thing. Obviously, they're going to be our harshest critics, not saying that we shouldn't be, but saying that we should be, you know, reflecting at different levels, right? Like so at a board level, reflect, at a cabinet level, reflect, and at a building level, reflect, how is everybody doing it, you know, as we do with other practices? So they kind of intertwine a little bit. But yeah, I mean, we want the knowledge experts providing that content.
Which is awesome, which is one of the reasons I think that having some of our staff go to some of these workshops is a great idea because, you know, as you pointed out, we just don't have the native staff in the district who can, who can deliver. You know, we're sort of counting on a couple of you who are employed here to be the experts to do that. Certainly there are other volunteers we can get, but I think that's one of the things we can work on is how we can make sure that more people get that kind of, get that kind of training.
And just one comment about that, I guess I would prefer native teachers, native experts because they, they do exist. And one in particular I could think of is Dr. Anton Troyer. I thought Dr. Holly was very nice. I think Dr. Anton Troyer could do an equally good job reflecting on the importance of diversity and the benefits of diversity in education and so on and so forth. So I think that there are those experts and we put those, we could certainly put those forward, but that would be my preference. Yeah, I don't know, Beal, any comments?
I think, I think we're saying a couple of different things here, and I think we might have mentioned this at night. I think we can improve the way that we communicate out, you know, the summer training that you mentioned, but that's different than the statement in here is you're asking that we mandate Native American Indian culture training for all staff. That's what the statement's asking. So that's different than will you help promote the training that's out there? So, and we had the same issue last year when the letter there was, we were, in print was different than what we were talking about here. So I think we'd have to get some clarity in what, are you really asking for what's in the black and white or are you asking for making staff more aware?
Yes.
So then the board will have to decide if you want to mandate that all staff are trained specifically in this particular culture, we probably need to know that. Because like I said on the phone, we today, we're locking in next year's PD days for the district. So that's different than us helping Guthrie promote the different opportunities that are available for staff.
And I think it's a both. And so I think one is to continue to have people come and see what Tucker and I are doing because I think it's, you know, everybody should have this baseline level of knowledge. But then two, you know, creating, we had talked about it, creating, you know, a team of experts, right? Like so getting our teachers out there and a leadership team from buildings out there so that, at least that way we can bring knowledge back to each building. But then two, what Valerie just mentioned with, with Dr. Troyer, he's a, he's a world-renowned speaker and he's, and he's from Bemidji. He lives here right in our state and provides great trainings. And so bringing somebody like him in for a PD day, I think is what, what everyone's thinking there.
So I'll read the rubric for full implementation from the Minnesota Department of Education with respect to the statute. My district or tribe has completed an alignment between our American Indian curriculum and the Minnesota social studies standards. We have a robust professional development system that supports consistent implementation of the curriculum across teachers and buildings. We have, we have invested in complete sets of instructional materials to support full implementation by all staff. My district, school or tribe has a standing curriculum adoption approval committee or board that regularly reviews new and existing curricula and instructional materials for cultural relevance, accuracy and absence of bias in relation to American Indians and quickly adopts materials that receive the highest scores in these categories. My district, school or tribe has current grade-appropriate, culturally-appropriate and historically-accurate American Indian materials or content representative of local tribal communities, which are in all media centers, libraries and classrooms and available to all students. So we realize now that's at one end of the spectrum, that represents a goal. That is the goal of the committee. We're not, I'm really, I respectfully, I don't think that this, that's, I think it's a false dichotomy to say that, you know, to say that we have to choose between what we're doing now and what we're asking for in the letter. I think what we're doing now is laudable, it's appreciated. However, you know, our, our intention is to hold forward what the goal and the standard should be hoped for. And we know what the result is when that doesn't happen. Kara? I mean, her, her children grew up in this district when none of this was happening. Maybe she can say a few things about what that was like for your children. I mean, because we're not, you know, this has real effects on, on children.
It's just, it's a complete absence in this, in Rochester. It's a complete absence. And the teachers need to recognize that, oh, I don't have any native students, I don't really need to learn this, maybe. I don't know if that's a thought, but that's probably not true. They probably do have native students and don't recognize it or acknowledge it because they certainly didn't recognize or acknowledge my children as Native American, and they are. And it was very hard for my children to understand where they fit in this community. So it took them leaving this community and going to a school that embraced them for who they were and allowed them to grow. So this community did not and does not, and the school did not. I also grew up in Rochester Public Schools and, you know, I did not have any of this, but I am not Native American. But I feel that it's important that we, as people who live here, know and understand this history and that the teachers don't have to have a native student in their class to just feel that it's important to understand the history of this place because it's extensive and it's completely ignored. And that's what we're saying. We just don't want it to be ignored anymore and we want the kids to feel more empowered because they don't. They're completely disempowered and they have to find a way to fit in and it's very, very hard on them.
Mr. Smith.
I very much support Director Barlow's approach. I think we need to continue to have the dialogue and meet. I think, you know, we need to actually establish the, the full implementation as the goal, maybe not as the mandate, if you will, but as the goal that we work toward. And if we continue to meet, dialogue and make progress on this, and we should expect that there will be progress made each year, then I think that we'd have a place to work from. And I do, and I also think it, it does start, I think it, if we have the rubric, your impression of where we are on the rubric, we have the administration's perspective on where they think we are on the rubric, and we have anybody else who wants to weigh in on where they think we are in the rubric, we compare that and we start talking about where the gaps are and then come up with a plan to address that, then we can continue to make the progress that we all would like to see here. Because I don't, I don't think anybody sitting up here at the board would disagree with the idea of, you know, having this as the goal and, you know, and making sure we, we want to make sure all our students, whether they're Native American, Black, Asian, you know, you name it, Indian, that they're all getting culturally relevant education and we're teaching respect for those cultures and one another because, you know, we all have to live and we're all in the same boat and we're rowing together, hopefully rowing together down the same one. So I would very much support the approach of both Director Selinger and Barlow to, you know, let's start with the rubric and get their, get your impression of that and ask the staff to do that or the administration to do that, then have the meeting, find out where we are, what work plan can we do? Because ultimately we have to decide, the board, because there's financial implications there, anything we do. So I'd pick off the low fruit, the stuff that we can do just by, you know, interacting with one another, that's, that's, that's easy stuff to do. The stuff that costs money, then we'll have to weigh in to where that fits into the budget and everything else that we're doing, but if we're communicating with one another, we should be able to, you know, move the needle, continue to move the needle forward. Very much appreciate you being here and I encourage you to just keep doing what you keep doing, we'll come back every year and hopefully every year we get a little bit closer to checking on. But I would like to see us address the rubric and have a, have some, some sort of understanding where we want to get to with this and how we can move forward. Thank you, yes.
Mr. Schlesner.
One other request I'd have is kind of building off of what Director Smith said is, I guess I wouldn't mind seeing an update more than on an annual basis. Whatever you can work out, I think would be good. As I say, work with my team, you know, continual improvement doesn't happen when you talk about something once a year.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah.
I have something I'd like to address. Um, I, like Kara, I have a, I have one daughter and we've been here in Rochester for almost 11 years and three years ago she was failing. Um, she was failing out of her classes and she was not on target to graduate and I didn't know what to do. And then, um, the parent committee started and suddenly we had somebody in the school system fighting for her and showing some attention and we got Guthrie and then we had this committee. And I'm very excited about that because there are children coming behind Vivian who are, um, going to need that kind of support. And I am so proud of everybody here for the last few years that have been working toward opening those lines of communication. Last year we might've had a little bit of trouble, but we managed to get past that with a lot of meetings and with, um, you know, respecting each other and opening those lines of communication. Now, we have to understand that those are for our children. And my daughter is set to graduate hopefully here in June. Um, it's been a really long path for her and she is a voting member on this committee. And we, um, I am just very thankful for everyone to, who, who has made this possible for her. She is one student out of many, but I try really hard to come to these meetings and try to keep her involved. And, um, but she is the only student that regularly comes. And so we're trying, what I, what I would like to see is for us to keep our, our relationship moving forward, but also try to bring our students in because they are spread out through all of these schools. There are so many of them and they're spread out through all of these schools that there's, there's, it, it feels a little disjointed sometimes and our main line of, um, our lifeline to them is Guthrie. And we only have one. So I just, um, I do like the idea of meeting more than once a year to, um, go over what our concerns are. And I just want to thank everybody here for making this possible because my daughter is going to be graduating and she doesn't feel as fearful in her school or as forgotten. And I just want that to continue for the children coming up behind her.
Thank you.
And final comment, um, so it is the, um, and I think it's important, uh, to remind the board and perhaps members of the audience and viewing as well, that, uh, these just aren't parents being willy-nilly and just, uh, requesting things out of the blue, but they're standing on the strength of Minnesota statute, uh, section 124D, point 78. And it might be of some value to us as a board to either have our legal counsel speak to us so we have a greater knowledge and understanding of what is required, expected. So we're not necessarily, you know, thinking that, uh, they're, the parent committee is asking for something that they're not really should, that they shouldn't be asking for or we're trying to give them something that all students should get. Uh, and so I'll just reserve further comment in, in hopes of having a, uh, meeting with, uh, someone from our legal counsel to advise us so we can have a better, stronger ground to apply to.
Yeah, we, we'd be happy to arrange that. We have been consulting with our legal on this for, ever since this group started. Uh, but I think it would be good for the board to get an education on that piece. I, I, I want to make it clear that I'm, my questions or concerns are not that I don't support you. I understand where you're coming from, your parents, you advocate for your kids. That's what you should do. I was hired by the district to advocate for the 18,000 over 80-plus languages that are in our district. This group here and those sitting over there, they're responsible for every child in our district. So I, I, I get where you're coming from, but I hope you understand where I am, where the board and the cabinet is coming from. Uh, you know, uh, I think people would be really upset if I just advocated for the students who looked like me. That's not what they hired me to do. They hired me to take care of every child in our system and that's, that's, I take that very seriously. So I don't want it to be misunderstood that I'm not supporting the work you do. I'm glad you're here. I agree with probably more meetings or at least have a meeting before you write your letter because I think some of the things could be straightened out and versus having to do it in a meeting like this. So I, I would encourage us to do that. I, I think Guthrie does a great job. I'd like to have one of him for every culture we have in our system, but I just can't afford that. But I, I think he does a nice job and I think we are starting to see results with your children. I mean, we had a hundred percent graduation rate this past year. Uh, personal story and example of success, we got a few more months to go, but I'm thinking clean sailing by now. So I, I think we continue to work together, but I just, like I said, I want you to understand I'm not against what you're saying, but I'm trying to look at the, from a district perspective.
Can I just say one more thing? Um, I understand where the board is at and you need to think about every student. Um, I'm, my, I don't have any children in the district anymore, so I'm not here as a parent anymore. I'm here as a community member who wants these other children in the district, not just native children, all children, to be taught the correct education and culturally appropriate history of this place and reason for being here and how we got here. So I am not just for my kids, because my kids aren't even here anymore. My kids have moved on. I'm, I'm, I'm here because I believe so much that this community needs this. Um, so it's, and that it, that there's a reason that they are different, that this, that this category of culture is different than the, the other groups you're talking about. So I understand, but there's a reason that it's in this, in the statutes the way that it is and why it's different than the other, the newer immigrant people who might be here and their issues. While I understand you have to worry about all those issues, this is a unique situation and a unique purpose and it goes kind of beyond just my student.
Thank you. This is an information item and that this discussion will continue and the meetings will continue. Quick question though, am I wrong that the letter is supposed to be submitted March 1st?
That is.
We have an extension.
Until when?
Sixty days, isn't it?
So from now we have sixty days. Um, I've been in continued conversation with MDE about this entire process.
Okay, good. Because it would be tough to hit that deadline.
You got it.
Not as good as those math kids, but I got that. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks.
Five point oh two, approval of world language software. This is a briefing item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, Jeanie Gibson, the deputy director, quick instructions, will brief us on this agenda item.
Good evening, members of the board. Unfortunately, the world language teachers that did the, the bulk of this work aren't able to be here this evening, so I'm kind of the, the pinch hitter for them, so hopefully I, I do them well by explaining this. We are fortunate in all three of our high schools to have a world language lab. And it was early 2000s, about 2002, when we purchased the software, um, that was being utilized. No surprise to anybody, that's dated software to say the least. So it, um, caused some potential threats and, and some barriers for our, um, tech team as well as it was not nearly the tool that our students deserved. So instead of just updating it, we went ahead and we did an entire search of tools that were out there to meet the needs of our students in the world language lab. Um, we found four tools and we, um, studied them pretty thoroughly. We ended up bringing two vendors in and went deeper with those vendors to learn more about their tools. Um, at the end of the day, when all was said and done, we decided the best tool for our learners was indeed, um, a tool that, it was an updated version of what we were already using. But to be absolutely positive, over winter break, um, the company came in, um, working with our tech team who's been absolutely amazing through this entire process, um, they installed it on all of our machines. They came back after our teachers came back from winter break and provided professional development. They've been out at our site now three times since then, providing support. They've allowed us to pilot it all of the entire second semester for no charge. And so, um, we now are at the point that we've made a decision, now that our students have interacted with it, our teachers have had the opportunity to, to work with it, this is the right tool for us. So what I'm briefing on tonight is a purchase of a world, of Sanico 1200 world language lab software, um, that would be actually purchased out of the fiscal year 2019. So.
Ms. Workman.
I, I'd just like to make a comment. I think it's just absolutely wonderful that the people who are actually going to be needing to use the software have, first of all, the opportunity for some significant input as to which software might be most effective. And secondly, that they've had the opportunity of actually working with the software to, um, find out in fact if, is this really what we're looking for? So, um, I really, I really appreciate that. I think it makes our decision, my decision certainly, a lot more helpful. Uh, yes, your information.
Um, excuse me, four questions, initially three, but based on what Director Workman said. Uh, so that formula then of allowing, um, software to be, um, if you will, uh, used temporarily prior to purchase, uh, by not, not only the teachers but the students, is that a best practice that will be, uh, potentially extended into other arenas? Secondly, in terms of the world language lab, uh, what students actually have access to that? Are they first year or are they going in their third, fourth year? Thirdly, uh, what languages are available? And then lastly, um, how long do you envision this, uh, particular software platform to be, um, relevant to ongoing adaptive, uh, software adaptability changes?
Wow, you're expecting me to remember a lot and answer them. So gonna go backwards here.
We'd like you to answer and reverse.
I'm going to. So the fourth question.
And you're being timed.
Um, the fourth question, in terms of how long will it stay relevant? Your guess is as good as mine. Um, we certainly hope or, or would anticipate with, uh, the features that we have is that we could at least get seven years. That's kind of our cycle, so we're, we're hopeful that we could get at least seven, if not more, years out of that. Um, in terms of, of how teachers use it, what students have access to it? It is for all, all of the world languages that we currently offer in our schools, including American Sign Language is available in the world language labs. Um, how the teachers use it is it really allows them to differentiate their instructions. So a, a teacher may be doing a whole group type of a thing where, um, coming through the system, he or she presents a question and then the students each record their own individual response and later the teacher will listen to it and, and, you know, provide feedback, um, to the response. Or the student may be working independently while a teacher is, is working one-on-one or with a small group of students. So it allows that differentiation. So it is utilized, um, in the languages from beginners to the, the more expertise or whatever. So, um, Spanish I through Spanish IV, for example, um, utilize it. Each teacher, um, dependent on, on their style, uses it, you know, a little bit differently and, and more or less, but each la, each high school has designated world lan, language lab space, um, that students and, and staff have access to. Um, and in some cases, I believe actually in all three of our high schools, it is a space that is available to students before and after school to come in and, and also interact and get remedial help types of things. In terms of this practice, um, like so many things in education, the pendulum kind of swings. There was a time when, um, this was just very common practice. Textbooks, software, whatever it was, was given to the district gratis to use and then make a decision. Um, the pendulum's kind of swung the other way where it's rather unusual for us to have the luxury of trying it out to this degree or this depth, um, but it's certainly something that is great for our staff and great for our students and allows us to purchase with confidence, honestly, so.
Thank you.
Ms. Workman.
Yeah, I'm, and I do not expect you to know the answer to this question, but it, it did, uh, raise one for me. Um, on their, their, um, proposal from the vendor, they say they will offer soft grade, software upgrade protection, receiving all new software upgrades that are released by Sanico during the first year. So do we have any idea, I don't expect you to know this, as to what those upgrades might cost in the future?
You know, we talked about it a little bit and that was kind of a gray area, so we didn't get a real definitive number. Um, it was contingent on how many and the depth and the extent of it. So, um, based on, like I said, Sanico is not this particular 1200, but Sanico was the tool we were using previously. And so, um, it was not, based on those numbers, it was not cost prohibitive for us to move forward with this option.
Other questions? And my understanding is that you're bringing to this, this to the board only because it's a purchase for over a hundred thousand dollars. It's already in the budget.
Yes.
Um, and I think it's a good education for us to find out what our language students, uh, what they're learning, how they're learning it. So I think that's a good education.
Well, it would've been awesome. I do have to, I mean, commend the world language teachers. There was, um, one from each of the high schools that was very actively involved in this from the beginning, but all of the world language, um, teachers at our high schools were, um, contributors in terms of giving us feedback and comments. And so just kudos to them. I wish that they could've been here because they would've done a much nicer job of, of presenting for you tonight, but fantastic team.
Well, and possibly the next time you give a presentation, you can do it in Spanish?
Uh, no.
No?
But I'll try.
Any, yes?
I'm sorry, I have one other question. Um, so I'm assuming that all of our language labs use PCs?
Yes.
Um, would there be any likelihood that they would not want to use PCs but perhaps go to Macs at some time in the future and is there a Mac platform?
Um, that was not something that is anywhere in our technology plans, so it's not something we asked about.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Is there a rush to get this purchased?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Seven point oh one, approval of boundary adjustments effective for the 2018-2019 school year. This is a briefing item, Mr. Munoz.
I wasn't joking. I literally did lock up the cabinet today. Um, as I, uh, first of all, I want to apologize for, uh, the information that's in Board Docs didn't get put in until very late today. Uh, also want to apologize to parents that are in the audience that were looking for that information, but as we shared with you on Wednesday night at our study session, we said it's going to be very difficult for us to get it, probably even get it done by the meeting today. Uh, we did, uh, able to squeeze a couple hours in on Friday and then pretty much spent, uh, from eight-thirty to, uh, four-thirty or so just on the boundaries. I think the, uh, data, the information that we have in Board Docs, uh, there's a lot in there. Uh, the PowerPoint is just going to try to hit the summarize, the, uh, information and what we are bringing for you tonight, I do believe are five options. And the way we have it set up is we, we will explain the options and then, uh, just show how that impacts the different schools as far as their enrollment, their, uh, in most cases, their ethnicity and free and reduced and special ed and EL. And then also, um, we identified strengths and weaknesses of each of the five options. So I have the pleasure of introducing you the first three. And option A is where we are suggesting that we take just the kindergarten, next year kindergarten students that do not have a sibling already attending Alton Hills and move them to Churchill Hoover. Uh, and then also, um, they would remain there in those two schools through fifth grade or to, until any future boundary changes are made. Uh, in addition, that we would also take the, uh, all students who are currently on exception to attendance, they would be, uh, their exception would be revoked and they would be, uh, told to go back to their neighborhood school. And then we would close Alton Hills to exception to attendance, uh, moving forward. So what that looks like, there are 51 next year kindergarten students who do not have a sibling currently in Alton Hills. So those 51 students would be going to Churchill Hoover and then, uh, the first through fifth grade are the students that are currently exception to attendance, but this is their grade for next to attendance, but this is their grade for next year. So it's a total of taking 97 students out of Elton Hills for next year. So how the sections would look? The first column gives you the number of sections per grade level that Elton Hills currently has, and the next column tells you how that would change with option A. We'd lose two sections of kindergarten and every other grade would stay the same. So what that would cause would be two, those two teachers would be displaced, which means they would have to find a job somewhere else in the district, and we have a process that you go through to address that for all of our teachers that are displaced. So when we look at how Churchill Hoover will change with this option, they go from four sections of kindergarten to six sections, and then all the other remaining grade level sections would stay the same. This does increase Churchill's enrollment by two sections, and it, as I said, already requires two kindergarten teachers that have a specific license. So you have to have a certain license in order to teach kindergarten. So we would be needing two new teachers for Churchill Hoover. So how would class sizes look like if we did this? The first column is Elton Hills, and then the second, the last column to the right is the Churchill Hoover. If you look at, and then the column to the left is the board set targets for each grade level. I do want to call your attention, if you look at Elton Hills, it says 11 and 12. That's very small class sizes. We probably wouldn't, well, I know we wouldn't run them that small, but we do have a group of next year kindergarten students that have not registered yet, and we've been trying to reach out to them. Some of them, we, their numbers no longer exist. So we think those numbers will go up some, but there'll be a time, probably towards the end of July, we'd have to make a decision. If it's still at 11 and 12, we'd probably go to one section and probably provide some type of paraprofessional support. So you see the six sections at Churchill Hoover, this is what, they'd be anywhere from 18 to 19 students. And if you look at first grade, it shows you what the class sizes would be at Elton Hills and what it would be at Churchill Hoover. There are only, of the students that are on exception to attendance at Elton Hills, only two of them, their neighborhood school is Churchill Hoover. So only two of those kids actually will go into the Churchill Hoover schools. All the others will go back to a variety of different schools. So you see the breakdown of class sizes. They still would be below the target, some a little lower than we would prefer, but you get to a situation where you can't go to two sections because it puts you over the target, so you end up going to three sections. Bit of information about the demographics with the change. The special education percentage at Elton Hills will increase by .6, and Churchill Hoover would increase by 1.9% with option A. We looked at how that would impact the students of color. At Elton Hills, it would decrease by 8.9%, where Churchill Hoover would increase by Data is not available for free and reduced lunch price for those next year kindergarten students because they, they've just registered, they have not applied for the application for that. So we aren't able to determine that impact until the next school year. So we determined what we believe would be the strengths of option A. It doesn't impact the current Elton Hills students, except for those that are on exception to attendance, it would just impact new Elton Hills students. It impacts kindergartners who have not established connections at Elton Hills yet. They have no, have a sibling there already attending, so they haven't built that connection to the school yet. The capacity at Churchill would go to 111%, Hoover would be 98%, and Elton Hills would drop to 116%. Since we are going to have some open classrooms at Elton Hills with this option, it provides an opportunity for us to, we have a school readiness plus program that really is Elton Hills, but we didn't have space, so we received permission from MDE to house that at Northrop, so we would move that back to Elton Hills because that's where it should be anyway. And then we do have MSB on the market, and so we will be moving staff out of that building. So this would provide some space at Elton Hills and Hoover for us to provide office space for those individuals that are currently in that building. It reduces the disparity in proportion of students of color between Elton Hills and the district average, so it does provide a little more balance between what Elton Hills currently is compared to the district average. Now, when we look at the weaknesses of option A, it potentially going to increase transportation costs, ride time and logistics, and, you know, until we actually get students placed and route students, it's really hard to determine the exact impact it's going to have, but we do anticipate it's going to have some type of increased cost in transportation. It does leave two vacant classrooms at Elton Hills and one vacant classroom at Hoover. It disrupts families who are on exception to attendance, and unfortunately, one special area content will have to be on a cart at Churchill Hoover because we're short one classroom. As we shared with you last Wednesday, we, you know, that is not, unfortunately, it's not uncommon across the district. We have other elementaries that unfortunately have to put a special light music art on a cart. Potentially is going to shift the compensatory dollars for Elton Hills. That's kind of, as we shared with you Wednesday, we've gone through the first round of staffing for Elton Hills, but we did tell the principal that there's a good chance he'll probably be called back, and if students are leaving that building, their compensatory dollars are going to go down and have to follow the students, and so he'll have to make some adjustments on his staffing because he'll have less dollars to work with. Another weakness is we'll have significantly under-target kindergarten sections at Elton Hills, and then families have not had the opportunity to provide feedback regarding how it's going to impact their student and their family with option A. So would it be helpful to take questions now on A before we jump through the others, or would you rather we just go through all of them and then take questions?
I'd prefer Madam Chair to address them in order.
One at a time? Do you have a question?
Actually, several.
Oh, geez, okay.
You had mentioned school readiness could be relocated from Northrop to, back to Elton Hills. How, is that part of the calculated capacity of 116%?
No. No, that, those, that, I don't know, it's probably 12 to 16 students.
Right now, but it could be 16.
Could be 16 students, so I don't think it'll have too much of an impact on their capacity percentage.
Right. Okay, and then in terms of compensatory dollars, the fact that there will be two less sections for kindergartens, and you had already mentioned that that would mean two staff would have to be relocated, is that the compensatory dollars you're referencing?
No, the compensatory dollars is based on your student enrollment, and it's really designed to provide additional support. Typically, principals use it to buy down class sizes, to buy up their paras, to buy up social workers, counselors. Buildings use it a variety of ways, but it's intended, it's kind of similar to title funds where it's additional funding to support students. And Elton Hills does have a pretty large chunk of that right now, but it's going to have to reduce some because of the number of students that are leaving that building.
So final two questions, one related to that statement. So the loss of the compensatory dollars obviously is based on the, where the student is. So whatever, however, whatever programs those dollars may have been directed toward may potentially follow those students to whatever school they may or may not, the need may not be, well, the need may not remain at Elton Hills if the students aren't necessarily there.
Yeah, I, the dollars would follow. The new administrator may choose to use that dollars a little bit differently. Say, for example, Elton Hills may buy an additional 50 hours of paras support, buy up their social worker, whatever the amount is, they may not be able to do all that, but the new principal may say, I want to use it to, to buy a reading teacher to help support that way. So the dollars would follow, but how they'd use it would be up to the team.
And then finally, the vacant classrooms potentially could be repurposed to their original use. For instance, if, I think Director Workman had mentioned at our study session that, you know, music, art, that those rooms could be repurposed back for that use if they were on a cart or otherwise.
Yeah, currently, right now, the buildings that we're talking about do not have a special on the cart. So.
I think it was the playroom in Elton Hills.
Basically, we would have open classrooms not being used, so that's why we suggested that instead of just sitting open, not being used, we would probably use them to house some of the people at MSB and to bring that one preschool program back to Elton Hills.
Thank you.
Let me just suggest for this, that I think having vacant classrooms is a really good thing. Elton Hills, for instance, the, some of the reading tutors were using a library, and I'm sure that both of those buildings, and I understand thinking about moving MSB people in there, but would certainly find a use for that space where small groups of kids could be tutored, worked with, whatever. But any other questions about option A or comments? Ms. Yelinger.
Well, we're on the vacant classrooms. Under the weaknesses, when you said two at Elton Hills and one at Hoover, does that, is that after we would fill with MSB? MSB?
No, no, that's, if we didn't move those in there, that's what would be vacant. We're suggesting.
We'd fill them.
Space is a premium, and having an open classroom, how, you know, it could be used for a small group or individual, but we also have some staff that need to be housed so we can, because one of our reductions for next year is closing MSB and the selling parts, aside note, but closing that is going to allow us to save some dollars, but we are going to be looking for space for those individuals. So that's our rationale behind that.
So potentially, they would not have vacant classrooms?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Smith.
So it's safe to assume then because we're doing MSB, that that's an assumption that carries forward every option. The relocation of MSB staff is something that's being looked at, considered in every option that we're going to be looking at.
Right, yeah. Yeah, the study session, if you remember, when we were talking about the current open space, once we moved the preschools out, we would use, see that as a use no matter what option we take. Correct. Okay, I'll move on to option B. Maybe. Okay. I think I went too far. Nope. Okay, option B is very similar to option A. The only difference is that we would only take 30 of those kindergarten students that don't have a sibling attending Elton Hills. We would still take the 46 students that are there on exception to attendance, so really, it's just taking fewer of those students is really the only difference between option B and A. So once again, I have the 30 kids be kindergarten, and then first grade through fifth grade is the same as their previous slide, but now we're only taking a total of 76 students out of that building. This is how it would impact the class sizes, both at Elton Hills and at Churchill Hoover. And this is the reductions of sections at Elton Hills. We would reduce one kindergarten section, and all the others would remain the same. So this one, we would only have one Elton Hills teacher displaced because we're taking fewer kids out.
Well, kindergarten.
Yeah, right. So this is how Churchill Hoover would be impacted by option B. They would increase one section of kindergarten, and then everything else would be the same. With option B, Churchill's capacity now would be 103%, Hoover 98%, and Elton Hills would be 122%. In comparison to option A, fewer kindergartners are moving out of Elton Hills. We saw that as a strength. It creates an option to house the school readiness program and also the MSB staff that we mentioned in option A as well, to fill up the open classrooms. The weaknesses of option B, the need for selection process. How do you identify the 30 students that will be moved out of Elton Hills? Or we could ask for volunteers and then use some kind of random selection to get up to 30 if we don't get 30 volunteers. Potentially could increase transportation costs. It's going to disrupt the students and families of the 30 kindergarten students and the students that are on exception to attendance. Once again, that's going to impact Elton Hills compensatory funds, and it would leave one vacant classroom at Elton Hills and one at Hoover. And a weakness is that this is a brand-new plan, so we have not provided the opportunity for families to provide feedback on this option. Questions on B?
Mr. Smith.
So it appeared to me that the only, well, there's some logistical differences, but in the number of kids differences, but the main difference here is financial. One of the main differences is the, B will be less, cost less money to do than A because we're going to be transporting fewer students.
Right.
Is that?
Correct.
So A compared to B, everything else, strengths and weaknesses are the same between the two, but the cost differential.
Right.
I mean, you could view that as, I guess we'll have to get through the whole thing, but I guess you could view that as a strength as well if it's going to cost us less to do B over A.
Okay. Ms. Yelinger.
And just a clarifying question. I assume if we take these new families of kindergartners and send them to Churchill Hoover, presumably then any subsequent siblings will follow behind them to Churchill Hoover.
Yes, yes, they'd have to.
My colleagues are also sharing that this option, a strength, we forgot to say, is that there'd be no art on a cart at Churchill because we only need to add one section.
Right, thank you. We're a team. Forgot to give me the signal. Or maybe I forgot to look over there.
I think Johnny got the signal.
Okay, all right. Any other questions on B? All right, my last one is option C. Option C is we would just open it up to all families at Elton Hills and say, would any of you like to transfer to Churchill Hoover? Trying to get anywhere from 80 to 100 volunteers. If we don't get that many, the next step would be to rescind all exception to attendance, and then we would allow those families to reapply and only allow those that we would, say, for example, if we had two spots open in second grade that didn't put us over our cap, we'd allow two exception to attendance that were in that particular grade level. So some of the exception to attendance could get back into Elton Hills, but obviously... So, some of the exception to attendance could get back into Elton Hills, but obviously, very few of them, but some of them could. But, this is a volunteer option.
Ms. Workman?
So, obviously, then, we don't know how it would affect capacity, because we don't know how many, if any, parents would opt to go to Churchill Hoover.
Well, when it's all said and done, we'd still target that number.
Okay.
It's just that the first round would be volunteers, and then we would take, move out all exception to attendance and allow some to come back, but still ultimately trying to get that number that would get us to the capacity that we've been asked to try to get to. Obviously, we're probably not going to get 80 to 100 volunteers to transfer schools, but that would be our first round, and then we would either use, we'd use exception to attendance to get whatever, let's say, we had 30 families, we'd like to transfer kids. So, then, we still have to get anywhere from, well, let's say, 70 more students that, well, not quite 70, but we'd have to get more students out of the exception to attendance to get to that target number. But, this just allows families to volunteer to move on their own.
One glitch I could see in that would be if you didn't need all of the exception to attendance students, and then, I mean, this is in the weeds, and I don't really expect an answer as to how you would do this, as to, okay, we need some exception to attendance, and which ones?
That was phase three of the plan. They could all reapply, and if I had two seats in second grade, we would take two second grade, and if I had one seat in fifth, we'd take one fifth grade.
Okay, thank you.
So, we would take some of them, but not very many of them.
Okay.
Okay?
I'm sure.
Yes.
Not quite done with C yet. Let me finish C, then we'll... So, we looked at the strengths. Family choice for some of them, so that people are a little more happier when they get to choose to move versus being told you need to move. We believe it would balance classrooms at Elton Hills and Churchill Hoover, because we can determine which ones of the exceptions come back to Elton Hills based on space at the, whatever grade levels. It provides, it creates an option to house the school readiness plus program and the MSB, just like we said before. Potential weaknesses, it's going to have some type of transportation cost. What we don't know now, we can't give you the demographics, because we don't know which families would volunteer to transfer out, and it would create some open classrooms at Elton Hills. And then, probably, the biggest weakness of this option is the timing. As we explained to you, we're almost done with the staffing process, but you would have to open up, you know, a week or two of giving parents time to tell us if they want to voluntarily move, and then you have to go through the process of rescinding exceptions and then reapplying, and so, it really would have an impact on the staffing and budget process moving forward. Again, we're going to see a shift in compensatory dollars from Elton Hills, and then the same weakness we had on the others is that, since this is a new option, families wouldn't have an opportunity to provide feedback on this. So, questions on C?
Mr. Smith?
If we direct you to eliminate one of these three, I want to hear you say it. My assumption is this would be the one you'd eliminate. Maybe not.
Of A, B, and C?
We have two more.
No, no, he's doing A, he's doing A, B, and C.
I would tell you, yeah, A through C, this is probably...
Your least favorite?
Because of the timeline is probably my least favorite, just because of the timeline.
I just wanted to hear you say it.
All right, all right. Now, I'm going to turn it over to John, and he's going to give you the next two options.
Great. This is option D. This is a brand-new option that nobody has seen before, unless you've been in board docs in the last couple hours and saw the picture, and I can throw it up there, maybe when we get done talking about it. But, we call this the Kotsky Park Cascade Lake. I think through some of the engagement meetings that you had, you received a suggestion, "Hey, how about you look at this neighborhood?" So, we did. We went and looked at this neighborhood, west of Highway 52, south of Highway 14, and we grabbed that neighborhood with our mapping software and added a little bit of Kotsky Park into it, and we came up with this option. This one removes pretty equal distribution from each grade, 15 in K, 15 in first, 20 in second, 20 in third, 14 in fourth, 21 in fifth, for a total moving of 105. This option does not assume rescinding any of the exceptions to attendance, so those kids can stay there. They've been granted the exception. We don't pull them out. We just redraw the lines, and we take this neighborhood, and we put them on a bus. They're probably already on a bus, but we drive to a different address then with them. So, how it sorts out, once we take those 105 kids out, we can drop a section of kindergarten at Elton Hills, a section of first, and a section of fourth. So, there'd be three teachers displaced at Elton with this option. Then, at Churchill, we go through and we add a section of second grade, and I think that's all that we had to do. So, actually, that turns out into a reduction of staffing, then. We're down two at Elton, plus one at, or down three at Elton, plus one at Churchill, so we're down two staff. Class sizes, this is how it would look. Elton Hills in kindergarten, 19, 20, 20. Churchill will be 18, 18, 19, 19. I think, just looking at it quickly, I see 12 sections at Churchill, so I believe that means if we have 11, do we have 11 classrooms or 12 there?
12.
12, okay. So, no art on a cart on this one. We have exactly the right number of classes. How our demographics are impacted, Elton Hills, free and reduced, would go up 10th of a percent. Churchill Hoover goes up 5 percent. The EL at Elton goes down 3.9 percent, then goes up 5 percent at Churchill. Special Ed at Elton goes up 1.6, but stays exactly the same at Churchill. And then, students of color at Elton decreases 13 and 1/2 percent, and at Churchill Hoover increases 6 percent. Strengths of option D, we get pretty, we get better balance, I guess, 110, 119, 113. So, we're all a little bit over capacity. The students that we selected, our students, we believe are mostly riding the bus already, so, again, we just drive them to a different address. It does not displace those current students that are already on exception. Again, it should create three empty rooms at Elton, so we can put school readiness plus back there, potentially, potentially move some MSB staff there. And it does get the students of color and our English learners closer to district average at both of the schools, so it brings a little more balance. Weakness is that it does create a non-contiguous boundary for Churchill Hoover, meaning that, I show you to here on the map, it becomes kind of an island that goes to Churchill Hoover. We have that same situation happening. We've talked to you about Bamber Valley having a section of the Riverside neighborhood and they're bust across town, so it's not something brand-new to us. It does leave those three classrooms vacant, and Elton one at Hoover. And I skipped over it. Again, nobody has seen this option brand-new as of this morning afternoon, so nobody's had a chance to give any feedback on it to us. And again, we would take some of that compensatory dollars from Elton and move it over to Churchill Hoover. So, let me just pop that up real quick. So, if you look at it kind of from a far-out view, you can just see maybe perspective-wise, it's that area south of Civic Center Drive, west of Highway 52. And then, if I show it to you a little bit closer, it kind of just shows a little more of the streets that are involved, west of Highway 52 and then east of Highway 52 there.
See the other area?
Sure, the far-out view. Let's see.
You didn't have any comment on there regarding transportation costs. Is that because we don't really know? Is it going to increase or decrease? Is there no change, or...
It's hard to know exactly. I wouldn't expect a huge change, because those, all those students are currently probably riding a bus, because it would, they're probably more than a mile and a quarter from Elton today.
Less than option A or B?
Should be, I would say, maybe less than option A or B, because some of those kids in option A or B might be walkers.
Okay.
Whereas these, probably, none of them are. Before I jump into E?
Ms. Yelinger?
It's not a question, it's an observation. Because I, because I drive, I've driven from Churchill to Bishop, and that can kind of be a haul, so I'm just, I'm just putting it out there for parent engagement, and your school's that far away, it's probably like the Gibbs parents up at Bamber, except they run closer to a freeway. I've made that dash from Churchill to Bishop.
No, I agree. I think that's, if you remember way back when it started, that was our rationale for taking that one Bamber group by Riverside. But, this was, I think, the area that came up through your engagement with the staff, that they suggested this area, since they were already being bused, so that's why we...
Totally understand.
Thought we'd play around with it and honor that suggestion and see how it looked.
Totally understand, just saying. Carnival night, plan ahead.
We kind of gave you a big job to do in less than a week, didn't we? I'm really pleased...
To be honest with you, that's an understatement.
Okay, I mean, so far, I'm really pleased with not only the number of options, but some of the different things that figured into your discussion, so thank you for that.
All right, option E. We call this the Indian Heights Northrup option. This is the original option two drawing that we had way back, way back is probably relative, it was maybe two weeks ago, but that option, you've already seen it, and we did have a little bit of parent feedback electronically from that, although we never had a parent input session like we did with option one, where people could come here and talk about it. But, anyway, in this plan, 22 kindergartners, 17 first graders, 17 second graders, so on. It was pretty equally split across all grades. Again, it was a total of 108 students being moved from Elton to Churchill Hoover. So, this is what it would look like for class sections next year. So, Churchill Hoover would increase pretty good size there, four sections of K, four of first, three of second, so on. And then, Elton Hills would have probably some smaller class sizes. Again, Elton would lose a section of kindergarten, a section of first, and a section of fourth in this plan. So, again, there's three teachers that are displaced from Elton in this plan, and then Churchill Hoover is able to stay the same, so they don't have to add anything. So, again, it's actually a savings of three teachers. Demographics, how it impacts, is Elton Hills reduces their free and reduced by 2.1 percent. Churchill Hoover increases 6.8. EL increases 0.4 at Elton, and at Churchill, it increases 1.8. Special Ed, they both go up 0.7 percent, so not a big change. And then, students of color at Elton decreases 11.2 percent, and at Churchill Hoover, it increases 4.3. So, some of the strengths of this is, again, we're pretty even between the three buildings, at 113, 118, 113. Allows that school readiness plus classroom to come back to Elton. Again, many of the impacted students are probably already on a bus. Although, this group of students is closer to Churchill and Hoover, they're not quite as far away as that Cascade-Kotsky option. And, again, we would not touch the students that are on the exception to attendance already. They'd be allowed to stay. And then, weaknesses, again, we had very limited feedback on this from the public. Leaves three classrooms at Elton, one at Churchill, one at Hoover. And then, again, we shift some of the money around. I think that was it.
Questions on this one?
I could put that up there, but this one you have seen before, so...
You want to see it up on the screen?
Sure, yes, I'm seeing some notes. So, it's part of a neighborhood that actually touches the Churchill Hoover boundary already. It just kind of takes off that east side.
Are you planning to recommend one of these options?
No, we aren't. We already made our recommendation.
This is probably, I have a question, a real breach of protocol, and I don't want...
Well, we have...
No, so, turn me, turn me down to put anybody in the spot, but have you talked with the principal at Elton Hills, sitting right in back of you?
He's aware of the changes, yeah.
And if there's a, and I understand that it might be smarter just not to answer, but if there is a preference from the principal, if there's one that he thinks is better...
I guess you could do that, but our responsibility as district administrators is to make these types of decisions and recommendations, so...
But, you are making...
I'm sure he's not going to be real happy with losing compensatory funds, because, but when you lose kids, that's kind of what happens. But, yeah, if that's something you, the board would like, we could ask him to join us.
And I really don't want to, Mr. Gates, I don't want to put you on the spot.
And that's, you know, it's fine, I...
You've got to be in a microphone, so that TV can pick you up.
I realize this is sort of like a Sophie's Choice kind of thing, so...
And I'm going to give the answer of, all these decisions are going to be hard, whether we keep it as is or take one of the options. And my job as a building principal is to have awesome teachers doing great jobs, and what we do there is we do what's best for kids. And any of these options, we take what's given to us and do what's best for kids.
We'd make it work.
We'd make it work, because we have some awesome teachers, and we have some great families, and that's, that's the tough part.
And you do, and they've been doing an amazing job. I was trying, is that you or me? Encourage you to sort of guide, if you had to choose one, for instance.
I can't choose one at this time.
Okay.
I haven't had enough time to dive into it, after leaving, looking at it, and then eating with my family, and then coming here and taking it all in, so...
That's fair. Thank you. Ms. Workman?
Yeah, I'd like to just make some personal observations. First of all, I have a little difficulty of moving students who are already in those attendance areas while keeping the exception to attendance kids in the buildings. I realize it's going to be a disruption for whoever, but I think, kind of what I've heard is that people, nobody's going, well, nobody, they're going to be unhappy people, but I think I have a preference as to which ones I'd rather have unhappy. I won't go farther than that, saying that. And then, the second, my second observation is, I really don't care about what happens to, well, I do care, but in terms of making this arrangement work for people who are currently in the MSB building. Chair Marvin alluded to it earlier. She made the remark that, for example, reading doesn't have enough place to have small groups. Right now, they use the library. We would have some empty rooms. I'd rather see those empty rooms being, have the first choice for student use in terms of providing those options for students that they currently don't have at Elton Hills. I think it was also at Elton Hills where, correct me if I'm wrong, where there was some question about kids who were having meltdowns, that there wasn't really nice, safe spaces to take those kids. I mean, it wasn't ideal for having to deal with some of those kinds of behaviors. So, before we start worrying about where the MSB adults are going to go, I really want to make this, whatever option we choose, work really, really, really well for students. So, those are just my sort of initial off-the-cup reactions to some of, to the options that have been presented.
Yeah, I'd like to, like to comment on that. I guess...
I know you didn't want to have classes empty, right?
No, I mean, actually, we're here, the change we're making is for the adults. That's really what we're here about. There's other schools in the district that don't have more space than what currently sits at Elton Hills for working small groups and doing that. I guess, from a superintendent's lens... I guess, from a superintendent's lens, looking, kind of what I told the parents earlier, looking from the district perspective, it doesn't make sense for me to have full-size classrooms just being available for if I want to pull in a small group of kids. When we look at the overall budget and we can reduce some costs by closing one of our buildings down and putting, finding a home for those individuals. So I guess we're looking at not only the boundary stuff we're talking about, but the overall district budget and the overall system as a whole. So that was why we recommended using those spaces for office space for these adults that we're shutting down their building as a district savings for next year's budget.
Can you give me some idea about how many offices you would get in one classroom? Or was it one classroom per...
I have no clue. I haven't done the measurements, but with the variety of classrooms and other space, we're moving some in this building. We're moving some out at FSC. We're looking for avail... Just a reminder, we're losing, we're lack of space across the district, so that's why we need to build two new schools. So it's more than just tonight's boundary discussion impacting one building. It's the district perspective is where we're coming from, and that's why we recommended not having open, full-size classrooms for that purpose.
I understand that. Thank you.
One of the things we talked about at the special session is basically a two-fold approach. There are suggestions of tonight for 2018, then a larger, broader districting for 2019. Do you have a feel for what will need to happen in 2019? Of which one of these options would be easier to work with, with the charge for 2019?
Well, I think whatever option we land on, especially if it's one of the boundary adjustments, I don't anticipate we'd have to go back and make an additional boundary change at Elton Hills. We'd have to go to Bishop. You know, we talked, at the study session, we talked about Bishop's, I think, 4% lower capacity than Elton Hills. That's one that we would address. We would still try to find a way to get more students into Riverside because they're under capacity. We look at...
There's lots of factors.
Yeah, I think the reason for our recommendation of waiting a year is that's what parents were asking for. We need more time. And we were saying, we would spend that time developing a comprehensive plan that would address all of the needs of the district. Have that decision had approved by the board by early November, so parents would know before our kindergarten, I call it roundup, but it's kickoff. So they would know, incoming kindergartners would know where their school was gonna be so they could talk to the right school that night. So that's, so no matter what option we take here, like if we do one of the boundaries, I would, don't anticipate we'd have to come back and address Elton Hills again.
Mr. Smith?
Well, what I kind of like to know is then, which is the least expensive option? We're gonna disrupt people either way. Any option we do, we're gonna disrupt. What causes the least disruption and which costs the least amount to implement?
I think, Gary, I think it's gonna be really hard to give you really accurate information. When we talked to Jeff about this, what he's telling us is until you actually route the kids, you really don't know how many routes you're gonna need to do it. I'm, you know, I don't know. When you look at the last two options, this one here that's on the screen, they're closer to the schools they're going to, so would that have less transportation? Well, but if you look at the other option, those kids are already on a bus, so is that gonna have a little, I mean, I'm not for sure how we could do that until we actually place the kids and then Jeff sets up the routes for next year and then we'll really know how many routes we need to bus all of our students around. One of the advantages is that we provide transportation for our district-wide option schools. So that means we have buses traveling all over the city from a variety of directions. So that helps with some of the cost. But I think tonight would be hard for us to say which of the five options would be less impact on next year's budget. If I had to answer that, I'd say our option five last time, don't do anything. So then it doesn't impact next year's budget at all. But either way, we can't give you, I could even ballpark what it would cost for the different options.
And we have no planning tool or pro forma tool that would allow us to model each of these to figure that out? Or we don't, or we don't have the capacity to do that? We don't have the time to do that?
I don't have the time.
I would say we don't have the capacity. It would, we wouldn't, we couldn't, there's no way we could have gotten that done for today. We could, okay, let's say if you narrowed it down to the two options, we could actually route the kids and get the transportation cost, because then we'd have to, all the kids that we roll up into next year's enrollment, we would have to, and that still wouldn't be 100% accurate because, you know, some of those families may not request transportation and some will. So we do have the software that allows us to do that. It would just take a lot more time to do that.
Ms. Becker?
So with the change in the number of staff, does that make a bigger difference in the cost than the change in the bus routing? Because there's a couple of them...
Yeah, really, if you're looking at it from that perspective, option E would allow us to reduce three staff, three teachers, and...
And that would be more than whatever the busing would be.
That would be, what, $95,000 times three? That's, we usually roughly use an average of $95,000 for salary and benefits for teachers. See, times that by three, that would be a savings if you selected option three.
I'm pretty sure the increased, if there were increased busing costs, would not equal that number.
Mr. Parham?
Two questions. First, to Principal Gates. I appreciate your candor, and I believe it's a reflection of not only your professionalism, but the teachers which, and staff that the district is able to hire and retain, that whatever cards are dealt, you're gonna make the best out of it. In many ways, we're here tonight because of the high student capacity of Elton Hills at 150%, I believe. How effective of a learning environment is that compared to if you were to have a student capacity of 120%? Is it any better, worse, the same? Are we kidding ourselves to think that we're doing you a favor, the students, the staff a favor by reducing the staff, not the staff, but the capacity?
And I think by losing students, going down to 120%, we're gonna lose some good staff members. And that's, but they will be shifted, but depending on the model, it sounds like we might lose some. So in the meantime, the most recent construction that we did over at Elton Hills, we did design some office spaces in the old office area. We had, we called it Suite 105. So we put six office spaces. They're not ideal, but it allows kid, or teachers, to work with kids. Like we're talking about breakouts for behavior. We have Mr. Doll, there's a success coach. We have our speech teachers. We have our EL teacher, our social workers. So we created good spaces. So we're utilizing what we have to work the best with kids. And our conference room is also utilized by our Fernbrook worker, our psychologist. So every space we have, nook and cranny, is being utilized. And like I said, like I said, I mean, we have amazing teachers that are working with the kids. So I mean, if we do move those, we are gonna lose good staff members. And that's the reality. And we'll have more space, but at the same time, we might lose, like the compensatory funds to fund those positions.
Okay, and just as my follow-up question to the superintendent. You had mentioned that what you would have preferred was presented last go-around, and of course, we had three options before us, not a single one, three options before us. And I'm just trying to navigate how we, I guess I was operating under the belief that after the study session, and once you knew what the board wanted, guiding change document, that would then give you clarity as to developing what you would believe to be the best option. And I believe when Director Smith asked you regarding that, that's what I personally would like to have heard, because I want to be fully supportive of, you know, that option. You may be thinking, well, you say that now, but what happened last time?
Yeah, I can answer that, Don. To be honest with you, our first recommendation, or my recommendation, hasn't changed. It would be to wait a year. Doesn't mean we're not doing anything. It's just waiting a year before we do a more extensive option. If not that, it would be option E. And I would say probably the main reason for that is this is an option that, at least it's not brand-new. The other, the five that we shared, or four we shared with you tonight are brand-new. And our families, at least this one, they had a little bit of an opportunity. We did send out a notice to families that were impacted by this option saying, your neighborhood is being considered for a change. I think we did only receive about 10 individuals provided electronic feedback. We didn't provide the face-to-face like we did with option one that we offered. But, so I think we would select, if we are gonna do something, we'd probably select E just simply because it's not totally new and families have had some time to provide some input.
Mr. Smith?
I'm playing a little catch-up because I didn't have the meaning, but it would seem to me that the prudent thing to do would be to wait a year. We don't, when we sit here and we look at these options and we can't differentiate them based on costs and what they're gonna cost and whether they're gonna add long-term, you know, costs that we cannot, can't make up for later on. And we know the administration has recommended, we have the time to take for the year to plan for this right and then make the decision then. It would seem the prudent thing to do would be to wait. Because I'm having a hard time picking, I mean, I can narrow it down based on what I've seen here. And I was with either, it was either ED or B. That's as far as I got, as far as I got. But if we can't, really don't know the cost differentials here, we're, I don't think we're, as a board, I don't think we'd be fully doing our job. I think we'd be rushing, making a decision that we'd be better taking the time that it takes to make, it may be a more difficult decision. It may have more people engaged and, you know, be more people upset one way or another. But as we all know, that's gonna happen regardless. We do something tonight, and we do it again next year, there'll be more people upset. We might as well just take the time. The problem I'm having is trying to pick one of these not knowing the cost differential between them and also the long-term impact on the cost to the district. So all that, to me, adds up. Let's take the year, go back to your original recommendation and let's take the year and the time we need to make the right, to make the right decision for the long term. If you're telling us that we can get by and wait for that year, that we have the time to do that, I think that would be the prudent thing to do.
Respectfully, Mr. Smith, at our work session, we decided to vote that down. That just no changes, we voted that down. And I'm very impressed with the options that you have come up with in a very short amount of time. And the presentation that you gave, they're clear, they're concise, you have the numbers, you have the impact on both schools. I hope, and Mr. Gates, I appreciate what you're saying about people feeling disrupted and teachers, good teachers being moved. As a board, we have to do what's best for all of our students. You know, that's kind of recurring theme tonight, for all of our students. We have an opportunity here where we have your wonderful school and your wonderful staff, and then two schools right near you, equally wonderful, that have amazing staff. And we have kids that are crowded into one building that will have the opportunity to get into buildings that are less crowded. And they can do that next year. I don't know that there's any magic formula to determine what's the best option, but what your staff told us, and they've been telling us for a few years, aside from the fact that they really like their principal, and now it's on record, is that they really believe it would be better for their students to have fewer of them in that building. Your teachers weren't whining. They weren't talking about how hard their work was. And they said repeatedly, they love the kids, they love the neighborhood, but they're saying it's better for the kids to be in a space that's less crowded. And I don't think it's that complicated. I mean, to figure out who to move clearly is complicated. And if you lose teachers from your building, hopefully, they will land someplace else in the district and be, you know, a gift to the kids wherever they are. Sorry, I interrupted.
Oh, no, I interrupted. What I have to say is, we are planning to move forward right now. When I did do the staffing to provide supports for the students and teachers and get like our instructional coach in a spot where, you know, it's not taking up space. It's, so we have been creative, so just know we have a plan in place already for next year based on what we have prior to this boundary change or whatever's gonna take place. So just know we have made some plans already next year based on our current enrollment, and we're ready to go. But if we would happen to change that, we'd have to go back and do that, which we would. But just know, I believe we have a good plan in place to support all kids that would be coming to Elton Hills.
Well, and you always have had a good plan in place. I just, what your staff is saying is it would be better with fewer kids, that the learning situation would be better with fewer kids. My knee-jerk reaction is that B and, well, not knee-jerks, is B and C are probably sort of problematic for a number of reasons. E, as you said, is one that the community has seen already. There's been some feedback on that. I think, to me, A seems like a reasonable alternative to, to move kindergarten kids who've not yet bonded with the school. And then I think D's a possibility, but my suggestion would be to eliminate B or C, B and C. Mr. Schlusner?
Kind of along the lines of academics is, have we seen any academic performance issues with the overcrowding? We know that your staff works extremely hard and they're probably extremely effective, but have we seen academic performance issues because of the overcrowding? As it relates to, say, the elementary schools within Rochester Public? I mean, you probably don't know the numbers from a disciplinary off the top of your head, but I think it's a question we'd have to ask. How are the students actually doing?
The students are making academic growth, but as of recently, it has declined.
Okay, so you're essentially saying, yes, you've seen an impact, and it's most likely contributed...
We can't say that.
Or at least potentially contributed to an overcrowding situation.
But again, like when we put the budget together next year, is we're putting good supports in place with reading specialists, with counselor, with, you know, a success coach, with our math interventionists and...
Mr. Parham?
I, from the beginning, was concerned about how this was brought to the board. Even had we been able to act upon it in March, there would still be this compression of informing parents, budget, all that. It's more pronounced now, most definitely. As we look at the, this item, 701, I do see that, as Director Smith had suggested, that we still have the option. I'm not saying this should be the option, but it remains an option of doing nothing, okay? Allowing that year for all these concerns we're hearing that, and hopefully, things would be different. I'd like to believe that we would have, well, more time. I'd like to believe that we would have, well, more time, obviously. The community, though, and I've been engaged in conversations, I'm sure many of the other board members as well, why haven't you guys made a decision? What's the problem? Why aren't you able to? And I don't know how to better answer... I'm not sure I'm even any better positioned now to answer that than I was prior to these recommendations being presented. Though I do know that in a moment perhaps, the question will be called for and we'll be asked to begin to vote on these various options, and I'll be curious to see where that takes us.
Well, we did, based on our conversation at, at study session, we were all over the place. We did put, I did put a resolution to wait a year and come up with a more comprehensive plan. So that is, I think, the sixth, sixth resolution that's in Board Doc. So we just wanted to make sure we covered all our bases because we didn't, if that's the direction the board decided, we didn't want to say, well, we don't have a resolution tonight, so we can't vote on it. So that's, that's why it was put in there, just in case that was the direction that you wanted to go. I don't want to repeat everything I said at the study session. I agree, we want to do what's best for all kids. We have a school that's 4% different than the one we're talking about tonight. We have, you were, my understanding that you heard from Gibbs' staff as well, so they could ask, so why not do something for us next year? Why are we only doing one school? So that, that's something to think about as well. But anyway, I just, we tried to cover all our bases with the resolution so we can make a decision because I think, Jeanne and I talked on Monday, that we have to make a decision tonight because we have families that are, are wanting to know what we're going to do for next year. And then, I don't want to keep harping on this, but we have a budget process and staffing process that we need to keep moving forward.
Ms. Becker.
The way I've really kind of been, the way I thought how this process was going to go, being on the, on the Long Range Planning Committee, was, you know, we were looking at capacities and, and there's so many different ways to kind of calculate the capacities, and, you know, all of a sudden we saw some, like, oh, wow, that's, you know, that's more significant than I thought. And then we came to the conclusion, like, well, we're, you know, we're probably going to need a new school or two schools. And so for me, since we're anticipating building another school or somehow, you know, acquiring another school or something in the relatively near future, I guess I, I really thought we were just going to leave the boundaries as is, and when we had the new school, then we were going to shift everyone because then everyone can be mad at you, you know, because everyone's going to shift. And now it's, you know, we're just, and again, like you said, I mean, Bishop, Gibbs, I mean, there's all sorts of them. And for me, I, I think, for me, I would like to wait. And because again, the thing that came across to me was, I know, parents don't like to be disrupted. They're just like, you know what, I just want to go to this school. If I'm going to have to change, fine, but I'm not going to want to change this year, and then in two more years, I'm going to have to change again because we're going to shuffle... I'm anticipating that we would shuffle everybody. So I don't understand why we're having the pain now and just, when we have the new school, shuffle everybody. That's what I would do.
We did talk about in the facility staff forces that we would need an intermediate boundary adjustment by anticipation of the new school or schools. What we hadn't talked about was potentially one this year, one next year. And even when you, even when you look historically at what the district has done, even before the last new school, there's minor boundary adjustments made before. So this really is, from a certain point of view, our historical, kind of the normal process of making adjustments because we know as a district, we're getting full on capacity, adjusting as far we can, hopefully, voters will help approve a new school, and then, yes, shuffle everything up, get everybody mad, and build the new school.
Mr. Smith.
Yeah, I agree with you, Schlesner, that we did, we always knew we needed to make a, a boundary adjustment. What we didn't know was the timing of that and the impact of that, you know, when we go, go to build and so forth. But what we do know now is what we, and I get the, you know, the gist of, let's, let's reduce the crowd, if we can do something about that today, let's do that today. That makes sense, you know, if staff, if you're, if you're concerned about that, I can appreciate the people who want to, to move quickly. But I think, again, looking at the big picture, what we don't know is what the cost, the incremental cost of making a decision today is versus the cost, long-term cost to the system when we know we have to adjust when we build the school. We have the administration who's told us, we have the time to wait. Yes, we'll have to suffer through another year, maybe some, some size, space shortages, but during this time period, we'll figure out the long term and we'll know what the cost benefit is to all the options that will be presented to us. My problem in, in supporting any of these options is because I don't know, I mean, I could, if forced to, I suppose, you know, I could, I could, I could pick one of them, and I guess I am forced to, I mean, going to be forced to pick one of them. And so now that I see that it is part of the resolution, I'm going to support the resolution to do, to do nothing and take, and take the year because I, at the end of the day, I think that's the prudent thing to do for students, community, staff, everybody, long term.
Ms. Workman.
At this point, I can't support Option E because I voted against it when it was Option Two the last time we voted. I thought that Director Seelinger made some excellent points about Option D, which is non-contiguous and it's, would, could make it very difficult for a lot of our families to be able to be involved in their neighborhood school. C, to me, is, there are so many variables in Option C, it's real fuzzy and it's just, you know, no. So, so for me, there are three choices left, which would be Option A, Option B, and just leave everything as is and have a longer period of time to study this, to make adjustments for the following year. So I'll let the rest of you convince me.
Can I say something real quick?
Sure.
I just want to speak on behalf of my staff. I know that they will support the fact of waiting a year based on the fact that we are looking into it. And knowing that we're looking into it and diving deep into it as a team or committee, however we decide to, I know that if they know that that's a mission moving forward, they will stand behind it.
Like at the end of the tunnel, in other words?
Yes, yep. That it's something that they've been, you know, sensing, and then now that we have a plan moving forward, they'll support that.
Well, now, see, that's, that's very helpful because you've started to move me in a little bit different direction. So maybe you should, well, you'd have to quit your job to be up here and, and the pay, the pay with the pay, not your own. But I, I really appreciate your sharing that, I think it's very important.
Because I can see the family's impact that's sitting behind me, too, and I know they want some time as well.
And just, just let me ask you this question, I, I respect that, but how would it be less disruptive next year than it is this year?
I think it's time and planning and having three kids of my own, just having that, if you're a part of the process moving forward, starting in November, like you're saying, and just having that notification and planning purposes for families, for teachers, for having a lot of input.
And I appreciate that, but, but the thing is, if we make a decision, you know, the, of course, we'll always listen, but at some point, we have to make a decision, and people are going to want to keep second guessing that. But, you know, this district has made boundary decisions for decades, and people adjust, and they may or may not like it to begin with, but I don't think anybody in this board would ever send a child from a great school to a less great school. And what I'm seeing here are some possibilities to send them, as I said before, from one great school to another great school. Now, I'm sensing that there are some on the board who would prefer to wait, despite, we decided a week ago to wait. I am not a proponent of that, but that's the will of the board. I'm wondering if it is time at this point to call the question, to vote on these options? Do you have more discussion? Mr. Smith.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution, be it resolved at the School Board of Independent Schools Board District 535 does hereby authorize the superintendent to make no changes for the 2018-2019 school year, but begin working on a plan to address the capacity across the district for the 2019-2020 school year. I'd make that motion.
Motion's been made?
Second.
It's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like a discussion on that, since that seems to be the option that would take out of consideration all of the other options. I believe the last time when we did this, two weeks ago, didn't we vote on each option We voted, we had to vote them all down?
We did.
If you were going to vote them all down, we just voted them all down.
That's the reason I made this one now.
You can do it that way, but you can also do what you just did. Somebody could call, make a motion second, discuss it, and if it votes and it's approved, then, then the rest...
Then we're done.
Yeah.
The motion has been, yeah, I know, so what we're, we're discussing right now is motion...
To do nothing.
Resolution's...
Resolutions...
We're not...
No, we're not voting yet, we're still, but we're discussing the resolution to wait for a year. Mr. Schlesner.
Yeah, it's one of the things that I think about for myself as I was, you know, say, running for school board, is one of the things I also felt that was important was the input from our community, from the teachers and staff. And while I absolutely recognize the overcrowding as a situation at the school, I, I think we do need to recognize that, you know, because of the timeframe in which this has been brought in front of us, we haven't had the opportunity to engage the community as much as we would like. And to me, that is one of the factors in supporting the proposed resolution of doing nothing. And yes, we want less crowded schools, but yes, we also want to engage our community and their thoughts and their feedback, which I think is part of this resolution, will give us the option to do that.
Mr. Barlow.
Additionally, what tonight has reinforced in my mind is the importance of hearing directly from principals, if you will. I appreciate Superintendent you allowing the principal to communicate. It certainly provides me additional insight, understanding versus what I hear, what others say, and also, as we each have undergone the MSBA training, to not necessarily commit to making a decision before you have all the information. And I think this go-around has provided additional information. I will admit that I, like, well, the entire board, those of us present, we were unanimous in voting down all previous recommendations. And I, too, would, this evening, just based on a number of factors, would probably lean, well, am leaning toward the resolution that you for us.
I have a question of clarification, and I'm looking, perhaps, board members can remember better than I. When we voted down the resolutions on February 20th, at that time, we had the two options, which I believe were both boundary changes, and the third option was to do nothing. Where was the part about the exception to attendance students?
That wasn't part of, the ones that we presented were actually just similar to, I have to get my letters right, D and E tonight, where you shifted boundaries. And then I think there was another option, I don't think there was actual resolution that night, but there was an option brought by a board member to, to a different section of the community, which is, I think, was our D that we brought tonight. And I don't even remember if we had a resolution there about waiting a year, but that was, I was asked, and I, here's my recommendation was to wait, not, not do anything, but just to wait a year and do a more comprehensive plan.
I think, I think that was, what I remembered was, I think we were talking about Gibbs at that point.
Yes.
And, and we were going to do nothing, but we were going to look at the exception to attendance.
Okay, so...
But then I think people were nervous then about the daycare issues and could they find it in time.
Okay, so I guess my clarifying question is, no matter which resolu, well, no, I take that back, because some of them, as Ms. Workman pointed out, have the exception to attendance students listed in the option. This one does not. Does that mean the students on exception to attendance would then be left where they are?
Are you reading my mind or what?
Or is there, is there either an amendment to the motion to be made, or would that be a administrative decision?
Well, my follow-up question would have been, had you voted and the wait a year passed, my question would have been, before I leave the table, would be, would you like the district, because it is board policy, so it's, basically, we could do two things. We could resend them across the district, can't believe I'm saying that, and make people reapply and just be real, I mean, we literally may have to go knock on doors to see if there's really a daycare at that school, at that home that's on the sheet. We could do that, or you could direct us to wait and address attendance, exception to attendance in the next year's overall plan. So that would have been a follow-up question I would have asked the board.
Okay.
Mr. Schlesner.
Not to get all technical, but this is listed as a briefing item, so I don't believe you've actually moved it to action yet.
No, we have not. We're discussing.
That is a technicality, right?
Well, it's true.
So the motion could be to move that option...
To action.
To action.
Which option? The one that Mr. Smith...
I would amend my motion to that.
You meant it to the right thing?
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded to move this act, this item to action. Any discussion?
I do have something, because I'm a little, I'm a little confused with this last company, the Seelinger's comment about the exception to attendance. So I was under the assumption now that if we do nothing, that...
We do nothing.
We do nothing. And, and that the, the district will survive this year of planning...
Right.
Doing nothing.
True, good point.
Because we'll deal with the exception to attendance as part of the next go-round and the boundary as we get through the, the planning. That'll be part of the, the policy discussion at that, at that point in time. None of this stuff has, none of this stuff has to get lost. None of this good work has to get lost. It just needs to be put into the context of the, the more longer, longer range thinking. This is all good work, we don't want to, we don't want to lose, lose track of this. And, I mean, if I was here at the last meeting, I probably would have voted, you know, right where, where you were at last, I probably had been with the majority at that time. But given tonight, what, what I've seen, that's why I, I'd made the motion. I think we're just better off taking the time. If you're, if you're, because that's why I want to be sure, because I might have voted against my own motion if you had voted something different. You raised that question.
I would suggest, Mr. Smith, then, that you add to your motion that exception to attendance is not addressed for next year either.
I think it's clear, I think it's clear in this.
Okay, all right.
That's fine. I'm all right with that, too.
This is about moving this to action.
Oh, okay.
It's been moved and seconded to move this item to action. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now, this has become an action item, and...
You can read the resolution.
You want to propose that resolution.
Well, we moved this particular item to, so now you can simply read, I think, simply read the resolution.
Okay. It resolves that the School Board of Independent Schools District 535 does hereby authorize the superintendent to make no changes for the 2018-19 school year, but begin working on a plan to address the capacity across the district for the 2019-2020 school year. Any discussion?
Yes, I need a motion first.
Second. So moved.
Oh, we're moving it, too.
Sorry. It's been moved and... It's been moved and.
Second.
Second. Mr. Barlow.
Mr. Barlow.
Mr. Smith.
Okay, thank you.
Wait, we catch up.
Now, now, any discussion? Yes.
I, I just want to know if, if moving, if approving the one that's on the table at the moment, will that tie your hands to making decisions about Elton Hills for next year concerning that there will be no new exceptions to attendance? There will be no, you know, I mean, right now, we have all these exceptions to attendance at Elton Hills. So can you, I don't know what the nomenclature is, close Elton Hills for next year, like, nobody else is coming in, and if you're here, you get to stay here, but.
Yes, we would not only do that for Elton Hills, there's a couple of other buildings that we would also just not honor any exceptions, just because of their capacity right now.
And my understanding is that that, that's board policy, so we don't need to vote on it.
Right, okay, I just, I just wanted to make sure that, that what we were voting on was not going to override our current.
Right, good point.
Policy. Thank you.
All those in favor of the resolution?
Do we have that side?
Oh, sorry, I didn't see that.
I, I think everybody has said, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. If we could bring chocolate, we would have brought chocolate. We have, as it's been pointed out, asked the administration to do a Herculean job, and I, before we take this vote, and I, I'm sure that my board, my fellow board members understand, would say the same, that we don't talk about these things and talk about these things and change our mind and discuss it and get people all riled up and then do nothing on a whim. I mean, I, I think if, as I keep saying, if folks hang in there with us, they see that this is, these are complicated decisions, they're emotional decisions, they're financial decisions, they're, you know, we take this very seriously. So I, I guess what I'm, I'm really trying to impart is that, you know, that we appreciate the work that has been done, we appreciate the parents who've watched this play out, we hope that you understand and appreciate the work that we have done up here to come to a decision, or at least come to a vote, we haven't come to a decision yet, to be clear. And I think I'll.
No, I, I, thank you, Deborah, I agree with that. I think, you know, there are some districts that just, in the superintendent's office, they redraw lines and send a letter saying, you're going to this school next year. They don't go through the extensive process that we've gone through. So I think hopefully, families will appreciate that. I really, truly believe they will appreciate that we're going to slow down the toots and really. I can't believe I said toots. We're going to slow down a little bit, and it's been a long day. And write that down as one of my, they've been, I apparently have been saying some really interesting things lately, so they've been documented, I think we're going to write a book someday, but I think in the long run, families are going to appreciate us taking more time and developing more comprehensive plan. Yes, some families are going to be disappointed and upset with the change, but that can't be avoided. But I too would like to thank all of these individuals. Literally, every minute we had in between staffing, we were doing boundaries. And unfortunately, many of us were thinking boundaries in our dreams and having trouble sleeping because we were trying to get this resolved and do the boundaries and the budget. So I just want to, I, I don't think people understand the amount of hours that these individuals have put in here in the last month, just to try to do something good for all of our kids. And that's what, all of us in this upper part of the room, that's what we're about. We're here to, to make good decisions for all of our kids, and so I just want to thank all of them for going above and beyond. I probably should submit above and beyond for all of them, because they definitely do deserve one.
Mr. Smith.
I was going to say, I, thank you, off our mind, thank you, Stu, but I, I don't see this as a do-nothing option. I, I really think this is a continue, what we're saying is, we're going to continue to build on the good work that's being done, and we're going to take our time and make the, the best decision, for the, the best decision for the, for the long run. And, you know, I, you know, I'd give, give you all, you know, kudos, all of your kudos for recognizing that, you know, we need, we need, well, we have loaded it, hope this way it turns out, you know, that, that taking the time is the, is the best decision to do it this time. So it's not, it's not a do-nothing, it's not a do-nothing approach at all.
Okay.
Sorry, no, I, I just, you know, I, I appreciate all the work that went into it and everything else, and I wish this were not March, I wish it were December. And I don't know what the board can do in, or working with you, Mike, in terms of making sure that we can, the first time we get information, that we really have the time, rather than getting it in a hurry, having to backtrack, and, because I think that really, you know, the public after a while thinks we're just really crazy up here, and we may be for other reasons, but, you know, and I don't know what all the factors were that went into us having such a shortened time to be considering it, and I don't care anymore about what those were, but moving forward, perhaps it would be good if the board could give some maybe more long vision plans of what we need to be doing, working with you on that. I mean, we've got the strategic plan coming up to be reviewed and some other pretty, maybe some, least one building or new space for students that we're going to have to consider. So if we can somehow get those, I hate to say on the calendar, but at least have them blocked out so that we do have the time that we need to consider all the options, all the information, the first time around, rather than doing this kind of backtracking, so.
Yeah, our, as I said before, our, our plan is to have the time we need to, so the board can make a decision by early November, so for our kindergarten kickoff, we, families know what their future is.
I, and I, I, I agree with that, I mean, in terms of just having, having the time. So to say, I mean, Mr. Smith, I think you made a really good point, it's not really a do-nothing, this is not a do-nothing resolution, it's, we're going to be doing something, but it's not going to be for the fall, if we vote for it, will not be for the fall of 2018-19. It would be the soonest for the following school year, and it would give the board and all of you not having to be locked up in the conference room all day long, to get something to us that we have to really make a decision on very quickly, so.
Keep it really short.
Sure. Before the questions called for, Director Schluessner, several meetings back, had, unrelated to boundary changes, requested or suggested, and was the discussion regarding the calendar. I mean, there are some things that we know we should have in place, well in advance of, so we're not dealing with compression. And, and so I appreciate your comment, Director Workman, that maybe a work session, we can identify those things and suggest a time parameters, after when they should hit the board and when we can then inform the public.
Thank you. The resolution has been made and seconded. It's been discussed, and a number of other things have been discussed as well. So at this point, all those in favor of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion passes. Thank you.
What's next?
Arc light.
I'd like to.
Entertainer recess?
Yeah. Can we take a short? Do we have one? Say what? Doing it at recess now?
Depends how long John's going to take.
It's God.
God, how long are you going to take?
Okay. Come on, sir.
7.02, approval of bids for Gage Elementary School bus parking and playground lot, this is a briefing item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, Mr. Sheridan, Executive Director of Operations, will brief us on this item.
You don't have to say good evening, it's good evening.
I need money for a Gage lot yesterday.
This is briefing.
Good evening again, but this is for a, a project that's kind of been in the works for the past four years. Back in June of 2014, or actually, we hired a, a company to design this, because this has been on our long-term facility maintenance project since 2014, and we had part of it bid out, and the second part of it was an alternative for the south lot. The first part was for the front driveway and the west entrance into that driveway, and you approved that part, and we asked you to reject the alternate, which was the south lot, because it didn't fit into our budget at that time, that was back in 2015, June of 2015. We put it back on our long-term facility maintenance plan for this year that you approved last June, and we've taken it forward now for the south lot. The design had already been done, and we're ready to move forward with the project. We sent it out for bids in mid-February, and we got four bids back on February 27th. The low bid was from Rochester Sand and Gravel in the amount of $291,856. And this is to complete the south lot on the south side of Gage, where the buses come in and they pick students up, and it extends all the way west to where the staff parking lot is. So it's not the entire parking lot, it's just on the south side of Gage.
Is this something you need right away? It's a briefing item, I'm asking that, or is it?
Oh, if you want to take time till the next meeting, that's up to you, it's not.
Will that go out of your bid? Because it's a month, so it will go out of our bid time.
Nothing's going to change on this, correct?
No, nothing's going to change on that.
I'd move this item to action.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move this to action. Any discussion? All those in favor of moving this to action, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's now an action item. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 accepts the bid from Rochester Sand and Gravel in the amount of $291,856 for the reconstruction of the south parking lot area at Gage Elementary.
Move approval.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Oh, sorry. I'm so used to saying, I'm so used to saying no to everything. Ignore, delete, delete, okay. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Good evening. 7.03, resolution disciplining an employee, this is an action item, and it will be a roll call vote. Therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 535 Rochester Public Schools as follows. One, the School Board hereby approves the letter setting forth the discipline and the basis or cause for the discipline. Two, the School Board chair is directed to sign the letter on behalf of the School Board. Three, the district superintendent or his designee is directed to serve the approved letter on the employee and place a copy of the letter in the employee's personnel file. Four, pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 13.43, subdivision two, the specific reasons for the proposed discipline, the nature of the proposed discipline, and the letter or private data on the employee until that final disposition of the proposed disciplinary action.
Move approval. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. There can be no discussion.
Correct.
So Ms. Edgar, will you take the roll call vote, please?
Mr. Barlow.
Aye.
Mrs. Becker.
Aye.
Chair Marvin.
Aye.
Mr. Schluessner.
Aye.
Ms. Seelinger.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Workman?
Aye.
Motion passes. 7.04, closed session, expulsion.
Pursuant to Minnesota Statute, second, Section 13D.05, subdivision two A.3, I make a motion to move into closed session for consideration of educational data in the administration's recommendation with respect to the proposal, to the proposed removal from enrollment of students who are not in compliance with the requirements of Minnesota Statute, Section 121A.15. Sorry.
We are in recess at 8:34. The School Board hereby accepts and adopts the facts and conclusions outlined in the notice of proposed expulsion as the basis for its decision. The School Board hereby expels the student from the Schools of Independent School District 535 Rochester from March 20th, 2018 through March 20th, 2019. The superintendent or a designee is directed to mail the following to the student and to the student's parent. A copy of this resolution and a letter stating that the student has been expelled from March 20th, 2018 through March 20th, 2019, and may apply to resume attending school in the district the first school day after the period of expulsion ends. The superintendent or a designee is directed to identify the alternative educational services or special education and related services that are available to the student during the period of expulsion if the student wishes to take advantage of them. The student or a designee is directed to make an electronic report of this expulsion to the Commissioner of the Minnesota Department of Education within 30 calendar days as required under Minnesota Statutes, Section 121A.53. Be it further resolved that the student is not allowed on any Rochester Public Schools property except for the building to which the student is assigned, nor is the student allowed to participate in any extracurricular school activities during this period, during the period of this expulsion.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And this meeting is adjourned at 8:45 PM.